Good evening, White Marsh. I would like to welcome you to and open the White Marsh Board of Supervisors meeting for tonight, Thursday, February 11th, 2021, beginning around 6:02 PM. Mr. McConker, would you mind leading us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we get into announcements, I just want to pause for a moment. I mentioned this at our workshop meeting last week, but I think it warrants saying it again. We have a broader audience tonight for us to take a moment of silence to honor the life of Mr. Carabots, who passed away this month, and express our condolences to Athena and the kids and just the family. Mr. Carabots had a significant impact on White Marsh Township and the surrounding community, and we very much honor and appreciate all that he does, and his legacy will certainly continue on. Please just take a moment. Thank you. Fran, can you lead us in or share the announcements?
Sure, thanks, Laura. Shred Day will be held at Miles Park on Saturday, March 6th, between the hours of 8:00 AM and 12:00 PM. The event is free, but donations will be accepted. Please be sure to remove all binding material and metal objects from your paper beforehand. The Parks and Recreation Department will host two Valentine's Day events for children aged two through six. The event costs $5 per child, and the sessions will be held at Cedar Grove Barn from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM and 12:00 PM to 1:00 PM on Friday, February 12th. Registration can be completed online at the township's website or by calling Parks and Recreation at 610-828-7276. Administrative offices will be closed on Monday, February 15th, in recognition of President's Day. And the Veterans Monument Committee will be hosting two public plan review meetings on Saturday, February 27th, beginning at 9:00 AM and 10:00 AM at the Miles Park Building. The sessions will be 45 minutes in length, allowing 15 minutes for changeover and sanitizing, and be an opportunity to hear more about the project, as well as time to ask questions. You will need to register for a session in Community Pass on the township website. If you have any questions concerning registration, please call the Park and Recreation Department at 610-828-7276 during office hours. That's it.
Excellent, thank you. So we are going to move into public hearings. Do I have a motion to reopen the public hearing for conditional use 04-20, Germantown Pike Associates LLC and Zachary Dillow, 606 Germantown Pike?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Mr. Kilkenny.
Thank you, Chair Boilnester. As you may remember, at our last public meeting, we had a presentation from Mr. Coles and Germantown Pike Associates, talking about the conditional use hearing for their apartments and such onsite. The conditional use process is akin to zoning. It deals with the use of a property, meaning is it an appropriate use under our zoning ordinance that has been defined and laid out. Our zoning ordinance has a set of criteria, which Mr. Coles called expert testimony to try to meet each of those burdens, to see if the conditional use is appropriate in the zoning district. We also had the opportunity for people to request party status, which nobody did, and there was voluminous public comment related to the issue. Much of the public comment, although related to the project, wasn't really germane or on point related to the conditional use, related to, was related to subdivision land development, which would be kind of like stormwater issues, parking configuration issues, traffic issues. Those are subdivision land development issues. And those will also, if the conditional use is granted, that will be the next step. There would be a process where the subdivision land development application, the plans that would be proposed by the applicant, would be reviewed by our planning commission, would be reviewed by the county planning commission, would be reviewed by our engineer at length, and then also would come back to a, if that was all approved, would come back to a public process here in front of the Board of Supervisors, where there'd be a lot of opportunity, again, to discuss issues like stormwater, parking, parking configuration, traffic configuration, trees, any kind of their landscaping. Those are issues covered by SALDO. So just so the public and the board understands, I know the board understands, but the public understands the difference between the two processes. I just wanted to lay that out front and just wanted to see if anybody on this, on this meeting is requesting party status. Okay, hearing none, or I don't know if anyone didn't see any. If nobody's requesting party status, wanted to hear if there was any additional public comment on this issue.
I'm looking in the chat room. I don't see any comments coming through.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, I can't see.
It's Mr. Glick, if Mr. Glick can identify himself.
Thank you.
Seven Wayfield Drive, yep, thank you. So I understand the precarious nature of the issue of conditional use. We saw this as we went through Abolition Hall. But this, these issues seem to be done deals. And they're done deals from the minute that a developer comes into the township building. And instead of suggesting that the developers reach out to the nearby residents and find out first what their concerns might be and how they might be affected, the township takes them through this process very hastily and quickly and helps them through. Because after all, this is really about money at the end of the day. The money that the township will receive in transfer taxes and other income taxes from these various residents that are going to be here. Clearly, the developers are going to be making money. And Mr. Yablon, I believe you mentioned that you were a longtime resident here of White Marsh and that you were trying to fix up the property. And to me, that sounds very disingenuous, because you could fix up the property. You could fix up the house. You could fix up, fix up the existing structures, and you could leave it at that and rent it out or sell it any way you want. But in order to get your real dollar out of this, you have to put in additional property here, which is not, in my mind, in keeping with the community. Yes, there is an apartment complex across the street, but that's been there forever. This was a single home back in the day and is now a residential, I'm sorry, now a commercial space, which fits into VC1. But adding this additional thing, in my mind, doesn't really fit with this area of White Marsh Township. We have to be able to, the Board of Supervisors has to be able to look at things at this point related to quality of life, public health and safety, which includes stormwater and traffic, and of course, air quality, since all these trees are going to be taken down. And if there was a will, if the Board of Supervisors wanted this not to happen, or at least not to happen in this way, you could ask Mr. Kilkenny to come up with a legal argument that, you know, may not be a strong one. It may be overturned if it was appealed. But what are we saying to the residents of the township when we're just allowing this sort of thing to continue? Thank you.
I'd like to respond, if I may.
No, why don't we see if there is any additional public comment first? And then we'll ask Chair Boilnester if she'd want to hear from the applicant anymore.
That sounds great, thanks. Any other public comment?
Well, Laura, if I may, I just, just to respond, I mean, the idea that we should encourage our solicitor to fabricate legal arguments is so unethical. I'm surprised that that was just mentioned at a public hearing, which is being recorded. I know Mr. Kilkenny would never do something like that. I know I wouldn't, and neither would the rest of the board. I also find it ironic that Mr. Glick, as an example of how these types of deals are done deals when they come in to the township, used the Abolition Hall project as an example, when it's one that fell flat when it reached the SALDO stage, as we said the entire time that it would. In other words, even though we spent weeks, if not months, of public hearings and hours upon hours at township meeting until 11, even I think close to midnight at some nights, telling everyone there, "At SALDO, we're going to deal with these issues. At SALDO, we're going to deal with these issues," and folks didn't want to believe us. We eventually got to SALDO, and the developer couldn't overcome those issues. So clearly, they're not done deals. Clearly, we enforce the proper laws when they should be, and we are certainly not going to be encouraging our solicitor, anyone on this board, to come up with fake or weak or non-existent legal arguments to suit anyone's agenda.
I feel.
So we're going to move on tonight to next public comment.
Please, please excuse me.
This is not a back and forth, no. We're moving on to other public comments.
Mr. Drauzner has just accused me of saying something that I did not say.
Eli, I didn't accuse you. You literally, you literally did it. You're the one that said, "Come up with any argument, even if it's weak, even if it's going to be overturned on appeal."
Yes, that's not fabricating. Fabricating means creating something that's untrue, okay? I didn't say that. You did, okay? Mr. Kilkenny, he can look into the ways of things that can be done as a client. To an attorney, you ask your attorney to do things that are within the law and find ways, and then the attorney can say, "Well, that's a weak argument. We're going to lose on appeal," and then you can say that, and that's fine, all right?
We've had those conversations.
Mr. Kilkenny, I'm going to object. Mr. Kilkenny, I'm going to object. This is still the applicant's case. I would ask that.
Hold on, Mr. Coles. You rested, actually, at the end of this, if you may remember at the last hearing. So what I'd like to do is see if there's any more public comment, if that's okay, Mr. Coles. Because that's the portion that we're in here, and Mr. Drauzner, as a supervisor, just made a statement.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any other public comments related to 606 Germantown Pike?
This is Linda Dahl. I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
Just sitting here and listening to this, I hate arguing, but I will say, I did not hear Eli say, "Go against the law." I heard him say that any solicitor, and I'm sure Mr. Drauzner knows that you can look at the law all different ways, and you know, all Mr. Glick was asking is that maybe this could be looked at a different way. There was nothing about going against the law that I heard. So I kind of take offense to that also. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Kilkenny.
Well, I believe Mr. Coles asked to say something additionally, if he would like to. Again, after this, then hopefully this is the end, because I believe Mr. Coles already put on his case.
Yes, Mr. Coles?
That's correct, Mr. Kilkenny. We rested our case at the last meeting, and I have nothing other to say, nothing else to say other than a closing argument, if you're ready for that.
Sure.
Okay. I believe the applicant has submitted a conditional use application to the township, which the township was required to process, obviously, under the municipality's planning code, and in fact, process it in a timely manner, which it has done. Thank you very much for doing that. And we have presented evidence through sworn testimony that we satisfied all the relevant criteria of the zoning ordinance relative to the use question, which is before the board, the conditional use. There was no testimony presented relevant to those conditions, which would tend to contradict our satisfaction of them in any way. So I believe we've established our entitlement to the conditional use requested, and we would ask you to render a decision this evening. And I would also like to state on behalf of the applicant that the applicants are investors who are White Marsh Township residents. They have attempted to do the right thing with this property in terms of restoration and property keeping with your standing zoning and respecting the architectural integrity. We will obviously be going through the land development process, as you've stated, and I would like to propose a number of conditions which are agreeable to the applicant. If the board were inclined to grant your approval this evening later in its agenda, the applicant would like to offer the conditions to the board that despite the plan you have as part of your packet, we would agree to decrease the number of parking spaces, as was testified to at the last hearing, down to the required number of spaces, rather than the 42 depicted on that plan. We would also agree, as condition number two, that the applicant would proceed through the land development process and include a full stormwater management design, as is always done, for the satisfaction of your township engineer, and that as condition number three, we would establish Zoom meetings with the neighbors to discuss this proposal through the land development process, and certainly before we see you again. So we'd like to offer those three conditions to you if the board is inclined to approve the application later this evening, and that's all I have, Mr. Kilkenny. Thank you very much.
Mr. Coles, I really appreciate your summary there, and especially the third comment, Zoom, if it was appropriate, but also, you know, onsite, if we get to that point that is safe and appropriate, given the pandemic, to be, you know, on behalf of the board, and certainly other members can share their thoughts, but I would really appreciate the developer being in close contact with the area residents on the project as it unfolds.
Absolutely, Madam Chair, we'll absolutely do that. And I would modify the condition offered to include certainly face-to-face meetings onsite if the conditions of the pandemic allow for such.
So, Madam Chair, unless there were no additional comments from the board, perhaps it would be appropriate for the Board of Supervisors to close the public hearing. After they close the public hearing, they could take action on approving this, denying this, or waiting within 45 days to approve or deny this. Those are what you have before you legally. And Mr. Coles has generously suggested some conditions. What I could ask right now, while the record's open, besides what Mr. Coles offered, are there any other conditions that the board may want to see on this potential approval? Because if there are, we can perhaps ask if Mr. Coles would agree to those conditions or not, which would save everyone some time.
Thank you, Sean. Does the board have any other additional comments for that, conditions?
Okay, then Chair Boilnester, I suggest you close the public hearing and take action, if appropriate, on the conditional use to, if you want to do, approve it with the conditions, you know, suggested by the applicant, or deny it, or wait. Those will be your options.
Do I have a motion to? So.
Close the public hearing, perfect.
Excuse me, one moment. Michael brought it to my attention. I forgot to mention earlier at the start of the meeting that J.C. Toll, our other Board of Supervisor, is unfortunately unable to be here tonight. But I don't know that that impacts the vote for this.
It does not. If the board wanted to go ahead and continue the vote, for whatever reason, I'm not suggesting you do that, then Ms. Toll could review the transcript of this hearing portion and then cast a vote if she wanted to.
Very good. I think, so I'd like to make a motion to close this public hearing for the conditional preliminary, to close the public hearing for the conditional use of 04-20 Germantown Pike Associates LLC, Zachary Dillow, 606 Germantown Pike.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. So I think I will make a motion to approve the conditional use 02, or I'm sorry, 04-20 Germantown Pike Associates LLC and Zachary Dillow, 606 and 608 Germantown Pike for apartments in the VC1 district.
With the conditions also suggested by the applicant on the record.
With the conditions also suggested by the applicant on the record. Thank you. Do I have a second? Was there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? I think I heard aye from all, so the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'll see you at land development.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going down to the minutes. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from January 28th, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. So I'd like to open the public discussion item for the review of the subdivision land development 05-14 for 901 Washington Partners LP 901 Washington Street for the revised preliminary plan of 62 townhomes.
So moved.
We don't need any action. This is just a public discussion item. So maybe Boilnester, if he could turn it over to Mr. Guttenplan, who'll introduce it and then turn it over to the applicants.
Charlie, would you mind?
Not at all. Thank you very much. This is a townhouse development proposed at 901 Washington Street. This is located, if you know Washington Street, basically at the end of Washington Street, adjacent to David's Bridle. It is the site of the former Finnern and Haley Paint Factory. And back in 2015, there was a plan approved on this site for an 82,000 square foot office building, but unfortunately, based on market conditions, the developer was not able to proceed with that. So since 2018, the developer has been working with the township on plans for townhouses here, initially with a sketch plan for 75 townhomes. They had to get some relief from the zoning hearing board, which they received in early 2019. And one of the conditions that came through with that approval was that the maximum number of units would be 62. The number of units on the preliminary plan that you're going to see tonight is that number of 62. It's a combination of 46 stacked or back-to-back townhouses and 16 traditional townhouses. I'm sure that will get further explained by the developer in a few minutes. The Planning Commission extensively reviewed this application during the course of 2020. In fact, there were seven meetings, including one site meeting. And at three separate meetings, the Planning Commission made recommendations on various waivers. And at the final meeting on October 27th of 2020, made a recommendation for preliminary plan approval and made the recommendation subject to the fact that on one of the waivers, they were not making a recommendation at this time. And that was a waiver relative to buffers, which, again, I'm sure we'll be talking about either tonight or in the future. So at this point, the plans that were last produced in August of last year are the plans that are on the table, in addition to a revised landscape plan to comply with the Shade Tree Commission and Planning Commission recommendations, which was updated in October. And finally, the last plan that you have in your packet will be discussed tonight is one that was submitted in January of this year, showing how they can comply with the subdivision land development ordinance requirement of 10% open space dedication. So that's where we are at this point. Those are all the plans that you'll be seeing in front of you this evening. With that as background, unless there are questions, I'll be happy to introduce Sarah Peck from the development team, and she can introduce the rest of her teammates.
Yes, please. Thank you, Charlie.
You're welcome.
Actually, Charlie, I'm going to, I'm going to start.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. So. My name is Jim Veezy. I am one of the owners of 901. My partner, Gary Toll, is on the call. Eli Khan, hugely successful developer from Chester County, is our other partner. I just wanted to give you some background, and I'm going to turn it over to Sarah, but just how we got here, because it's been a fairly long, strange trip. Not to use a Grateful Dead quote, but we closed, we bought this building in 2013, and we went through and got approvals for the office building that Charlie mentioned. It was 82,000 square feet. It was two stories. We thought at the time that if we could come up with a cool, unique office building, smaller than the towers that were being proposed down the street, we would be able to get a one or two tenants that didn't want to be in a tower and, you know, less expensive, and it seemed, it seemed to make some sense. We got approvals in 2015. We spent two years marketing it. We're, our ownership entity, we're very involved in the commercial space. We own many, many office buildings, industrial buildings, and so while we made some proposals, the traction was clearly not there for a variety of reasons, but, you know, we spent two years trying to, we really didn't get, you know, to second base with any of the tenants that we talked to. So we took a step back and said, "All right, you know, let's, let's go to Plan B. There's got to be another, another, you know, use here that makes some sense." So we decided on townhomes, and really, there's two reasons. I want to, I want to just, and I want to just, you know, share the thought process to how we got here. Number one is, we looked at the landscape of Washington Street, and there's 3,000 apartments from where we are down to the, you know, past the Fayette Street Bridge. Now, granted, most of them are in Conshohocken, but it's sharing the river views. And so, you know, we thought, there's actually too many apartments. We had, we could go ahead and do the apartments, but we just thought that that's, we're just, you know, that that's not something special. We wanted to do something special on this site. And we thought, the young professionals that are in those apartments, if they like the location, they like being near a train station, they like being on the river, they like being near the running trail, and they want to own a property, that, you know, they're growing in their careers, and they want to own, where are they going to go? And there wasn't really an alternative. So that was one thing that we, the appeal of this site. And again, we love the site for the uniqueness, and it's a challenging site in many, many ways. But so we thought, you know, townhouses make sense from the, from the end user. But the other thing is, and I'm going to ask a question from the board, who here goes to the Jersey Shore, either owning a home or vacationing? You know, I'm going to say probably most of you do, you know, spend time at the shore, and why? It's at the water. Everybody wants to be on the water. If you have a friend out in the Midwest, Minnesota, Wisconsin, I guarantee they have a lake home or a family lake home that they go to in the summer. Everybody wants to be on the water. The water is soothing, it's relaxing, it's, it's. So this, again, was one of the special qualities of the site, and we thought, you know, someone that wants to own a home, he wants to look at the river and, and be close to the train station, be close to Philly, that this seemed like an ideal situation. So they were the two drivers to lead us to doing townhomes. Now, as I said, we own a lot of commercial buildings. We are not residential builders. So the next step was trying to find a partner, a residential builder, developer, either selling it to them or partnering. We were open to anything, but we just figured we needed to find the better use for the site. So, and I personally took a big lead in this. I probably talked to 20 local builders. I talked to Lennar and the Toll Brothers of the world. We actually, at one point, had an agreement with Lennar, and I, you know, that probably would not have resonated well with White Marsh, you know, as things turned out. But the big guys seemed to think, "This is not big enough for us, and it's too complicated." The little guys, you know, this was a big, big job. And so we were talking to, you know, again, many, many builders. And Sarah Peck, who has a relationship with Eli Khan, one of my partner, she, she heard about this, and she approached Eli and said, "I'd like to take a look at this, and I think I, you know, I could help you guys." So again, we had, we had, we had had our first round of plans. We had taken it through zoning. We made some. So a-again, we had, we had, we had had our first round of plans. We had taken it through zoning. We made some changes. We didn't quite have our partner yet, but so Sarah, we gave Sarah a bunch of information. And within two weeks, she came back with a better plan, a, a budget, a pro forma, a, 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 you know, she had the whole thing laid out, and she met with Eli and I in, in Eli's office. And I gotta say, I didn't know Sarah at the time. She walked out and was like, I, we were blown away. It was like, you know, the Eagles looking for a, a coach for their team and supposedly blown away by Nick Sirianni. I don't know if that's true or not. But the, the, you know, so, and one of the things Sarah did was the, the concept we were originally going with was a stacked townhouse. You see that with Toll Brothers in Valley Forge, where there's, you know, there's two floors and then two floors above. Well, we're also building above a parking structure. So then you're going up five stories. Someone has to go up three stories to get to their, their front entrance. And Sarah said, you know, I have a better idea. You can do these back to back townhouses that I've done in Bryn Mawr that have been hugely successful and look great. And it's, it's a much better way to go. And, and so we decided then to team up with Sarah, and she got very involved. Now, Sarah is, I don't want to minimize, she's, she's very, very accomplished in her own business. Her, her company is Progressive New Homes. She's won numerous awards, Willard Rouse Award, Montgomery Award, Commonwealth Award. And again, the, the, the project that I'm most familiar with, because I used to live in, in Havreford, was the, the Danley in Bryn Mawr, which is a really nice detailed townhouse development. So anyway, once, once we got Sarah on board, we continued the process through the planning commission. We had already made a bunch of concessions to the zoning board. The units went from seventy seven to sixty two. Some of the design things, you know, the, 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 the back to back versus the stacked, we didn't need to go so high, which we had a variance for. There, there was a bunch of things that, that, again, we, we worked on an emergency action plan and which we ultimately ran by Nick Weaver, the current fire marshal. And he loved the plan. And so again, a lot of positive things came out of the, the zoning board process. We then started with the planning commission. And as, as Charlie said, we spent a lot of time with the planning commission. I'm gonna give kudos and give some props to to Vince Manuel, because he sat in and listened to this, and he should, you know, again, kudos to him for, for sitting through, because it was a long, arduous process. But at the end of the day, we made some additional concessions, and I think we came up with a better plan. There were some objections. And, and again, the goal here is to come up with a world-class project, something that White Marsh is proud of. And I think that's what we've done. We, we finally got here, and we got approval from, from the planning commission in October. And then we're now here in front of the board of supervisors. So that's, that's just a little bit of the backstory. We've, we are really proud of what we have. Where, where there's a lot of things that we're, we are giving back to the community. You know, we're going to improve our portion and offer for dedication Washington Street. There's a river trail, which is part of the, the riverfront development, you know. Lot of time spent with the Shade Tree Commission on trees, and Sarah's gonna get into a lot of these details. We have an emergency boat ramp that the county has asked us to do. We've made a, we, we, we're, there's a ten percent open space that we're, we're, that we're gonna offer for, you know, for, for use. And again, I think at the end of the day here, we're not talking apartments. We're talking owners, residents, you know, taxpayers that, that are gonna take some pride in their, in their, their home. And also, it's a way to kind of kickstart that whole end of Washington Street that, you know, everybody wants to see get developed. You're on the river. It, you know, there, it should be something nicer than what it is today. And we think that our project will kick this thing off and, 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 you know, be a very viable addition and, and a Kickstarter to everything down on Washington Street. I do have a, a, an ask. And again, we've been at this for a long time, and we are nervous about missing the market. This is a great market to sell a home into. And I would ask the board's help in, and we, I made the same plea to Rick Mellor and to Charlie Gutten Plan. We'd like to just, you know, help us get through this, this final leg to, you know, get, get building and create something that, that will help. We think White Marsh, White Marsh will be proud of, and will help the development of, of Washington Street. So I don't know if we're, we're gonna vote on the resolution tonight. I would ask that you would, but I, I just say, we, we really do want to get moving on this, and we, we, we've made many, many concessions to the township and the various boards to come up with a good plan. So again, my, I'm, I'm gonna turn it over to Sarah. Sarah has a PowerPoint that she's gonna share. And, you know, have at it. Thank, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Jim. I don't know who I'm asking of this, this request, but could someone share the screen? Allow me to share my screen.
You should be allowed. You should be able to.
Okay. Can everybody see what's on the screen?
No.
No.
Not yet. Okay, so I don't think I'm, oh, I, because I have to share, that's why. Share screen. Okay. Can everybody see this? Yep.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, as Charlie mentioned, this is the site location. Just to give you an orientation, here's the Scoop Hill River. We're east of Conshohocken Borough, and this is Lee Street. This is the Spring Mill Train Station. Of course, we're on the river. Here is a local view, and it depicts the access off of Lee, the David's Bridle property, our property, and the Boat Club to our immediate west. This originally was one single property, and it was subdivided in the early two thousands. As a result, we share an access or an, an access to the site on this end with David's Bridle. Of course, you know, the dominant feature here is the river, as Jim so aptly mentioned. And then we have the train tracks here as another defining land use as well. We have Washington Street, which pretty much ends at this point on the western boundary. And then we are proposing to build Washington Street to, to this, for our frontage, approximately six hundred and fifty millennial feet of frontage. This is a view of what the site looks like today. The building that had been there is the paint factory has been razed. So what's left is a concrete slab. We're looking towards the river in this picture. And this slab is five feet above natural grade, leftover from the original factory. The original building had an elevation because of the floodplain of five feet, and we are allowed to keep that same elevation for the new development per FEMA. This is the original office plan that Jim referenced, as you can see. And this is the plan that was approved in the zoning hearing process. Sixty two units, townhouses along the frontage here of the river, and stacked townhouses here. And Jim, the stacked townhouses resulted in five stories over, over a garage. And as well, these townhouses, although they were a little bit lower, they were blocking the view of, of these other town, townhomes. When I first got involved with this process, I, I came up with a different product type, as Jim mentioned. And what we see here is a different configuration where the the buildings are perpendicular to the river, allowing everybody views of the river. As well, we moved the townhomes, the conventional townhomes over here. And the blue represents what we call back to back townhomes, and the yellow represents conventional townhomes. And this, at the time, when I first got involved, was a rendered version of that same plan. It gives you a little bit better sense of the views, because each of these, as I'll explain, has roof decks. So everybody's able to see the views, kind of like you would see down at the shore. And of course, we have rain gardens for stormwater management along the edges of the trail. The trail will go through along the river. And again, this is the Boat Club. This is David's Bridle. So that's where we were when we first got involved with the planning commission. Over the course of our many meetings, and frankly, Charlie, I counted more than the number you counted. But maybe because I loved it so much, I, I, I'm overthinking how many meetings we, we attended. But in any case, it was a lot of iteration, a lot of back and forth, a lot of input from the public and from the planning commission and the Shade Tree Commission, and we ended up with this plan. Now, what this does is it moves the entrance separately here. So we are now away from David's Bridle. We are no longer sharing the entrance to David's Bridle. We're, we have our own entrance over here. As well, we were able to, I don't know if you can see it, this, this see if I can make it a little bit bigger. I can't. Yes, I can. Okay. So right here are driveways. We were able to put in even more parking. We have quite a bit of parking to begin with. Not counting the driveways, we're already at two, two and a half, roughly two point four spaces per unit. So we're not counting these driveways because they're not quite regulation, but they still serve very much as driveway. So every other, within these courts, every other grouping of buildings has their own driveway on top of two car garages, tandem style, within the buildings. And over here, we have two car garage side by side for the townhouses, and they have their own parking, parallel parking behind, behind their garage doors. So not counting that additional parking, we have two point four spaces per unit. Counting the additional parking, we're at two point nine spaces per unit. The other thing that that plan allows us to do, now that we were able to move the entrance over, is to have buffering on either side, on the eastern side and on the western side, as you can see. So we now are able to introduce some plantings and some screening on the eastern side with David's Bridle, as you can see where those pines are. I'm having trouble with my cursor, so I don't know if you can see it. As well, we'll get to this a little bit later, in, in, in doing the trail, we were able to also find another ten percent open space. And we were able to create a green in the lower right-hand corner, as you can see. Can everybody see that? Sort of a large green over here? This, this area here. And so what we were able to do was redesign to pull the townhouses back towards where the rain garden was originally and pull the rain garden closer to where it really is gonna have a much better ecological benefit, being closer to the riparian corridor. As well, we are now having a nice, big green that will be dedicated, or at least offered for an easement to the public. And created a sort of a boardwalk style overlook here that will overlook the, the river. Which we'll get into a little bit later. This represents a hologram of how the back to backs function. The blue is one unit, the white is another unit. The front, the fronts have their own front door, and the backs have their own garages. So they're separated completely, but yet they, they look like a single townhouse. So this is the garage level here in the bottom. The next level are the, is the living level, and it splits front and back. Third level's the bedroom level, and the fourth level is going to be a loft level with, with a roof deck possibility. And here it is in plan, if you wanted to take some time to study it another time. But basically, as you can see, this is a twenty four foot wide module that splits side to side in, in the garage. So everybody has their own two car garage, one in front of the other. And then upstairs, it splits front to back. So you have your front unit with your living spaces and your back unit, which has even a little bit more space, because it has balcony. And then you have the bedroom level and the loft level. Up at the top, you have a third bedroom and a roof deck. And even though there's no windows on the sides, because the ceilings are tall and because the windows are tall, you can get a sense of space and light. This is a rear-facing back to back townhome from another community. And this is a look back to the kitchen, to give you an idea of the space. And as I mentioned, we figured out a way to have roof decks, even on the back to backs. And this is another job, but basically it shows you how the roof deck might work. And then that, that way people are afforded views of the river. And this is an illustrative, just a progress draft of what a front elevation might look like for the back to backs. So as you can see, everybody has their own front door. The front units have their own outdoor living spaces, as well as the roof deck. And the back units have their own outdoor living spaces, as well as the roof deck. Here's the, here's a back elevation, and gives you an idea of each individual garage and how they're tucked inward to minimize the view of the garage door. It's not, it's not rendered, but you can get the idea. We're gonna utilize some masonry elements, hardy plank and, and batten, board and batten style, to kind of give it some interest, because don't forget, the people in the back are looking at somebody else's rear, and we want that, we want that to be as interesting as the front. So here are the roof decks up here for the rear units. As I mentioned, we also have townhomes, and here's a floor plan of the larger townhomes. They'll be more like twenty five hundred square feet. And they also, they have a two car garage, but it's a full side by side two car garage, and then it's a much bigger space upstairs. As you can see, we have this staircase that wraps around and goes up around a wall of windows, again, views of the river. And when you get to the top, you have a third bedroom and a study, because a lot of people were finding, are now working from home as a result of COVID or otherwise, and that person would have a roof deck and a view of the river. So those will be, this is our thought, anyway, of how, how it's evolving in terms of how it's gonna look a little bit more contemporary. And again, here's that wall of windows I was telling you about as they go up the stairs. Which, by the way, that whole cavity could become an elevator if somebody preferred to age in place. And this is a back view of that, of the townhome, you know, the larger townhomes. This is not necessarily the same plan. It's a little bit narrower than the proposed plan. So our proposed plan is two foot wider than this, but it gives you an idea of how the space could lay out in the same dimensions lengthwise. This is a little bit, you know, a price point of what we're anticipating, the back to backs being a little more affordable, low to mid four hundreds base pricing, mid to high four hundreds with upgrades, and the townhomes going as high as the mid to high six hundreds, starting in the upper five hundreds. Jim mentioned that there's a lot of potential market from the people who've, who've, who, who are renting upscale apartments, who want to stay in, in Conshohocken or in White Marsh, who like the location, and who want to start, you know, growing some roots and being, you know, part of the, part of the community. And I just did, for fun, I took some numbers and looked at what it would really, if they only had five percent to put down, and they paid the private mortgage insurance, and they paid their homeowner's dues, and they had about six hundred and fifty dollars a month in, in revolving debt, you basically would need somewhere between ninety six thousand to a hundred and twenty seven thousand, depending on, you know, the price tag, to afford to buy here, to qualify for a mortgage at today's rates. And that's pretty good, because if you think about two professionals living together, that's not, that's within reach, you know, a hundred thousand dollars a year is within reach. And so it's entirely possible, you know, some of these folks might decide to stay put. This is a floodplain, as we mentioned, and naturally, everybody has the question, how are you going to build enclosed garages, even if they are on the first floor, in a floodplain? And I just wanted to point out the smart vents, which I used in Downingtown, which also had been prone to flooding. And this allows any hydrostatic pressure to be relieved in the event you had water coming in. But as we will see, the chances of that are relatively small, because we're already breezed up so much. But as you can see, there are these little vents, and they look like this. They call them smart vents, and they're really not that smart. They're, they're rather dumb. But when, when there's a fire, they melt and shut, and when, and when there's a flood, they open and let the water through. But there's no electronics involved or any of that. It's a pretty simple concept, but it does work, and FEMA then approves this for reducing flood insurance rates. This was the initial thought about the riverfront trail before we redesigned. As you can see, the buildings were right up against the trail here, and this has since been removed. But it gives you an idea of the overlooks that we had, that we had built in and some seating. And we'll, and some of the trees we're planning to save. And as I mentioned earlier, this is how we visualize the open space working for the public, both, both for the residents as well as for the White Marsh public to benefit from. And this overlook here, there'll be some steps to climb up. This is just illustrative of what it would feel like. It's sort of a boardwalk type feel, and, you know, it's wood decking, and, and people can enjoy the use of the river. wood decking, and, and people can enjoy the use of the river. And then it, it goes right into that green space I mentioned. Um, some of the hazard trees are coming down. For example, this is one of them, right where that overlook is. This will be cleaned up and new trees planted. And some of the, um, the trees that are in poor quality will be removed and replaced. Uh, the trees that are in good quality, which is quite a few of them, will be retained. The riparian corridor is very important to the whole concept here. And as I mentioned, if you look at this, this is, these rain gardens here, which are part of the stormwater management system, actually function as a totality with the ecosystem for the riparian corridor. Because as, um, uh, the, first of all, they have the proper plants that, that will thrive in these conditions and also cleanse the stormwater. But as they fill up and the water spills over, it, it's, it helps to, um, strengthen the plantings that are going to be incorporated here into the riparian corridor. Um, we spent a lot of time with the Shade Tree Commission, thinking through, and the Planning Commission, thinking through how to best utilize the township's ordinance with some tweaks to it, which they were very open to letting us do, um, to provide for more trees, but skinnier trees, which we felt would take better to the slope of the, uh, riparian corridor, the riverbanks. So we're actually tripling the number of trees, but there's, but instead of one three-inch caliper, we're doing three one-inch caliber. In addition, they let us take advantage of your, um, ordinance, which allows more shrubbery to substitute for certain trees. And we now can create some nice understory, um, as well as trees that are native to the area. So we're, so we're really concentrating on native trees, that many of which are already there in, in the forest. So by, by having this, the understory, the canopy, and the extra, um, whip trees that will help stabilize the, the bank, in addition to the rain garden, we have created a whole nice ecosystem that we think will do well. Um, and this is, that's a classic way to approach these kinds of things, where you have the upland, and then you have the, um, the trees in the understory. Um, we noticed in some other township, they have these, um, interpretive signs, and we thought that might be a nice idea to put along the trail, so that people who are, um, taking in the, the riverfront could also understand the plantings and their value, and, and why we chose, we chose, and how they all interrelate with each other. What we're not doing, and I thought I'd just show this picture, just for a contrast, we're not, um, we're taking a more naturalistic approach to the, to the riverfront. This, this is what we're not doing. This is perfectly fine for the boat club, but it's, it's diametrically opposed to what we're trying to do ecologically to the river. We wanted to take a second to talk about, um, Washington Street, because part of our proposal is, and it's incorporated with the resolution, is to, um, improve Washington Street down to, uh, the, the, the boundary with Conshohocken Borough. Um, and we just want to make sure that, um, you know, we share our thoughts for what we intended. We don't intend to widen, we're going to widen, we can widen it within the existing Pico poles and, and, and the existing railroad, uh, guiderails. But we can't really go any wider than that. So that takes us to about 25 to 26 feet in width. Um, we can, you know, repair the, the base and level it out, because there's some kind of interesting, um, curvatures to the, to the road, and then resurface and stripe it, and make sure it crowns properly and things like that. But we, we weren't, you know, we're, we're resurfacing. We're not, you know, tearing it up and starting from scratch, and when we're widening it. But the, the end result will be, it'll be a very passable, uh, you know, two-lane, uh, secondary road for the, for the residents here. Now, we cannot have the road go all the way through, and I think everybody's aware of this, but I just want to point it out just in case. Our proposal is to put a, um, electronic gate that would, uh, be, have a fob that's controlled by the residents, so that the public at large does not, um, actually, I think we may have moved the gate down a little bit. We want the, the public to be able to get down to the, uh, the riverfront. I forgot to mention that. We have, we have public parking at, at the trail, um, also. So we envision the public coming this way and then down. Um, so this would not permit through access on Washington Street. Why? Because when you get to this pinch point here, it's really not intended for through-way public usage, because it's only a one-lane, you know, passage. And this is also David Bridle's frontage. So that was the compromise, was that once, someday, this will go all the way through. But for now, this is going to service the residents only, and the public can still get down here to the, to the, to the trail. This is how we envision coming in off Lee Street. And then, um, let me just go back up to this for a second. Um, and then here, I also wanted to point out that we have, a public access, you know, the pedestrian access this way, protected to get to the train, which is right here. Before, that was one of the comments the Planning Commission had. They didn't like how we had the access before, so they figured out a way to have public access this way, you know, in a protected area. And then I guess I wanted to just point out the floodplain issue, and, um, this is my crude attempt to show you, um, how I think, this is the lowest point on the site, which is still at that five-foot platform, um, pad, that I mentioned earlier, that concrete pad is at five feet above already, above the natural grade. So Lot 37, 38 are at the pad. They're at the pad height, which we're, we're saying 55.5 elevation, okay, which is 55 feet above sea level. That's, that that means. So in the past, there've been measurements at the Fairmont Dam, and Nave Nul's done a lot of work on this. They've done the hydraulic analysis. And there's only been four times since 1931 when the, when the waters have gotten this high, 56.5, meaning one foot above the pad. So that's actually enough. You're, you know, you, you certainly have, um, you're two feet better than that elsewhere on the site, but you, you have plenty of time to move your car if you decide that that's something that's going to negatively impact your, your car. The water did not even reach the pad in, um, Hurricane Isaiah, just to give you a, a comparison. And then the 100-year flood is at, would be at 60. So this is your worst-case scenario, right here. And it's, it's all masonry construction down here in the garage level. And as I mentioned earlier, the smart vents, um, will allow any kind of floodwaters to withstand hydrostatic pressure. So that's really the extent of my, um, my presentation. If there are any questions, um, we'd be more than happy to address them.
Thank you, Sarah. Does the board have any comments and questions?
Yes, um, Sarah, my concern, I guess, you know, my biggest concern is kind of where you ended there, um, and, which is, um, you know, the potential, you know, for some, some water damage, you know, in the garage. Um, how are the residents there notified about that risk? You know, they required, I believe, to have flood insurance. Is that a discussion, at least, that, you know, I mean, I would think most people, if they were buying along the river, would understand that risk. But, um, you know, there may be many people that don't think about it and think that, hey, it's here, and White Marsh is, you know, I'm sure they're allowing it, so it must be safe. And, you know, I, I would hate for it to be a situation in, you know, three years, five years, 10 years, where they come to us and, you know, and, and they've had terrible damage to their car or property in their garage. So I just want to check out how they're notified and to make sure that they can do their due diligence to, um, to protect their property.
It's a good, it's a great question. What we, um, we would take many steps to ensure that everybody who bought there was fully aware of the situation. Of course, it's in the public offering statement and in their deed and in their declaration. Um, but it's also part of the selling process. You know, you want to make sure they understand, um, they're part of the redevelopment of the riverfront and coming along with that, just like at the shore. There are certain, um, you know, byproducts to that. One of the things the Planning Commission asked us to do was to have an evacuation plan and a notification plan. So we actually have about 11 to 15 hours before the river would crest when you have a major flooding event. So the real key is communication with the residents. And, what we came up with in this plan was a, kind of like a telephone tree. There's going to be a captain for each area that would then notify people, who would notify people. So if they're living under a rock and they didn't know it was, you know, a flooding circumstance, and they truly were, you know, um, uh, oblivious, they would be getting contacted, you know, emails, phone calls from the decision tree from, you know, from the residents. So I think, you know, your point is well-taken. You have to go in there with your eyes open, that this is, um, one of the byproducts of living in a place like this. And, um, the risk is relatively small, because you can manage it, you know, with plenty of time and your car. In the unlikely event it ever got that high. But, you know, they, they would certainly be aware, no question.
Thank you.
Sarah, I had a question about the pedestrian walkway over towards the train. You said that that's a protected path. Can you explain that a little bit further? Is it like a covered walkway? Um, can you describe that a little bit more?
We weren't intending on it being a covered walkway. We were intending on it being sort of fenced in, um, with, um, you know, a state fence or, or, it, it would be, it would be a visual, um, protection. Um, there's, there's really not enough room to do jersey barriers or something like that. Um, but there could be, um, there's about three feet, I think we have, or maybe three and a half feet. Um, so, you, you know, it's really meant to be visual, a visual, um, separation.
And how far away is it from the actual train tracks itself? Like it's, like walking over it. I'm just trying to get a perspective there on how close it is.
The train is, is, it, it's as close as about 12 feet at its closest. Um, and then it's, and then it widens up. As you get towards Lee Street, it widens up considerably. Um, let me see if I can get that picture again. With one of the last slides that we showed. I don't know if you can see this. Can you see this?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. So really, you have a pretty big distance over here. This was before we put in the pedestrian path, but, um, where you see those flags, you would have, you know, some kind of railing or guiderail to protect from going over to the tracks. And then on the other side, you'd have some kind of a delineation for the pedestrian.
Thank you. And the other question I had was related to the open space area. You said that that is, um, that would be accessible to the public and that boardwalk area. That's not just for the residents. So, yeah, that was the picture.
Yep.
And where, where would you walk down from and park?
Okay, thank you. I forgot to mention that. Um, so right over here, um, I don't know if you can see, um, these spots down here, including some handicap, would be where people could park, and then the trail, that would be the trailhead. And then they get on, there's, there's a walkway down here to the red shale trail, and then this goes along here like this. And then when they get to the end of it, there's steps going up. If you can see that, they're, that, 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 you know, are actually, um, handicap accessible. So you can go up, turn, and come up again. Uh, it's like a ramp. And then you went, this is your overlook.
Thank you. And what, what's the medium for the trail? What, is it going to be made of?
It's made of the required red shale macadam, um, that's in the ordinance and the zoning.
And I think the other question that I've seen come up is related to the sidewalks?
Yes.
I don't know if that's on that picture.
Oh, oh, you mean the, um, south side of driveway B, I believe. Our sidewalks are, um, we, we, we were trying to fit 15 pounds in a 10-pound bag with this. We're trying to get the trees on both sides. And we ended up, and we also widened the street. That's another thing we did with the plan change. It was originally 24 feet, and there was some concern that that wasn't wide enough, so we, so we widened it to 25 feet. And when we did that, we had to try to rearrange. So we ended up making service walks on the south side, three, three-foot-wide service walks, just to, 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 um, support the, the homes. And the public walk is on the north side. And that's the full sidewalk on the north side. So I believe Charlie thought we needed a waiver, because we never actually formalized that. Charlie can speak to that better. But I think we needed a waiver just in case we didn't adequately cover that in the approval.
Charlie, is that correct?
Sorry. Yes, it is. And I think the other, um, waiver that is relative to sidewalk that you may also be referring to, um, is the sidewalk going perpendicular down to the river. Um, Sarah, you might want to explain that one as well, please?
Sure. Um, I, if everybody can see my cursor, I'm going up and down. So, okay. So technically, the ordinance requires that this trail, this red shale macadam trail, continue perpendicularly up to Washington Street. Um, it's just the way the ordinance language is written. So we have a regular sidewalk here, a full five-foot-wide sidewalk going north-south to Washington Street. Um, and, and for that, we needed a waiver. So it still fulfills the whole point of getting the public down to the trail.
Do we have other board questions? Okay, I'd like to open it up for public. Oh, I'm sorry, it's on him. I can't hear you.
Um, I'm sorry. Could I just ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, Charlie, I know, uh, previously, uh, and during the, uh, Planning Commission process, I guess there, uh, was related to the, um, the 50-foot buffer and the planting issue. Uh, has that ever, have we ever reached agreement with that in the applicant?
Well, I'm not sure what you mean by agreement, but, um, I'll tell you what the status is. They requested a waiver for the 50-foot buffer, um, which would impact the plan both on the east and the west side, along the, um, David's Bridle side and along, um, the boat club. They do have a continuous buffer there, but the plantings are not 50 feet wide. Um, our interpretation of the ordinance is that is what is required. Um, so they do need a waiver for that. Um, the Planning Commission didn't choose to make a recommendation on that. Um, however, I will point out that there have been other situations, including the boat club, that have had waivers for similar with, um, buffers. The, um, Shade Tree Commission felt the buffers were adequate. I believe staff feels they're adequate, but they would have to technically get a buffer, I'm sorry, get a waiver for the buffers the way they're shown on the plan right now. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, I see a couple. Linda, Linda Dahl had a question?
Yes, I do.
Uh, is that five-foot slab that you mentioned in the beginning, and you showed the picture that's staying there?
It's, it's, it's coming out, but it's coming back in. It's coming out so that it can be, you know, uh, made to com, to current codes and everything. But it's, it's not going to come in as a, as concrete. It's going to come in as dirt, fill, and, you know, the plan, the plan that you see. So yes, it'll come back up to the five feet, but it won't be the same exact concrete slab.
I seem to recall, and I, you know, I attend a lot of meetings, and maybe getting your site mixed up with something else. But I thought that there, that five-foot slab originally was going to be kept there, because underneath, there's some environmental issue with toxic things under there, and that's why it was going to stay.
And that's why it was going to stay. And by you removing that, that may make some environmental issue is, am I wrong with what I'm thinking?
You're correct that there, and thank you for reminding me. I completely forgot to cover that. This is a brown, what we call brownfield site. Because it was originally a paint factory and, and industrial before that. It has historic fill, you know, contaminants scattered throughout the soil. There were a couple of spots where the paint factory kept their, their solvents in a vault. That were particularly contaminated. That was all removed, excised and disposed of. So what's left is this scattered stuff in the, in, in the soil. Since that is not meeting residential statewide health standards. It might meet commercial and industrial standards, but, but of course you want to go much higher standard because this is a residential development. What we're going to do is cap the entire site with either two foot of clean fill or clean soil. Or concrete or asphalt, but the entire site will be capped one way or another. And then we came up with a, uh, then, so we got a cleanup plan that's been endorsed by the DEP. And, and what we call act to approval. So DEP weighed in and, and reviewed all of our testing, tremendous amount of testing. And the groundwater is undetectable levels of any contaminant. So it really was in the soil. And you're absolutely right that cap was there to also cap what was, you know, under. It wasn't there for that reason because in those days they never measured anything to do with contamination. It just, it was there for flood plain, but it had served the purpose of, you know, capping stuff. But we're going to essentially go back to that exact concept, Linda. Is we're going to put, you know, we're essentially putting the cap back, only it'll be clean this time.
I appreciate hearing that because, you know, people living there. And you've heard so many stories about things in the ground eventually coming up and affecting the people living there. So when you say it's going to be clean fill, to me that sounds like dirt and dirt with water. Eventually things rise to the top. So I think cement would be a better idea or something that you can't penetrate with any environmental issues. Uh, and I have another question. Now I may have heard you wrong here. Did you say that, that flood vents that are in the garages are FEMA approved? But they don't really work for fire and floods?
No, 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 no. I, I, I was joking when I said they're not really smart, they're dumb, you know.
Yeah, no, I took you literally.
No, no way. I just meant there's no electronics involved in it. There, it, it, it's a very kind of simple concept, which is in a fire they close and a flood they open. You want them to open in a flood because then the water just can equalize throughout the building. And there's no what we call hydrostatic pressure that would cause the building to buckle or crack. So FEMA hasn't, has approved that concept. And as a result, they lower their flood insurance requirements because you're building to that standard.
Thank you. I, I did take you literally.
Okay, Sedell, I believe had a, had the next question.
Thank you. Sedell Zoe Hartsbridge Road. I have a few concerns and I'd like to direct these primarily to Charlie Gutten Plan. Because they are related to Saldo, Saldo and/or zoning issues. So I'm quite concerned about this three foot wide sidewalk. That runs more or less parallel to the river, the whole length of the development. I'm not familiar with the code using the term serviced sidewalk. I think that the requirement is that there be sidewalks five feet wide. Where there's residential development. Now, I heard Charlie say that this is a new waiver. So I don't think that this waiver that we're now hearing about. To reduce the sidewalk, public sidewalk from five feet down to three feet was considered by the planning commission. That's one issue. So I'd like to hear from Charlie on this matter of sidewalks. Is it, is it not the case that the code calls for five foot wide sidewalks? In this red type of residential development?
I'll be happy to answer that. The applicant asked for a waiver to allow a four foot wide sidewalk on the north side of driveway B. Which is the east west driveway or roadway through the project. We have discussed this with the developer more recently. And indicated that they will have to amend that buffer, that waiver request. And change the sidewalks on the south side to also be four feet.
Uh huh, okay. The code does not differentiate between public sidewalk and service sidewalk. That, I have never seen that anywhere. Is that true? That that's, that the applicant has applied that terminology to the three foot wide sidewalk?
What, 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 let me decide, if I could jump in, this is, Charlie, I didn't understand if that's what you were wanting us to do. Because that'll compromise being able to fit the trees, which you of course want. The Saldo only requires sidewalks. It doesn't say both sides of the street. So we thought we were, and this isn't public, this isn't a public road. This is homeowners association road.
No.
So on the north side, because we were trying to widen the street to deal with the planning commission's concerns. And I think your concerns too, Sedell, that you wanted to see wider streets. We ended up compromising with the width of the sidewalk. So, you know, something has to give. So we ended up with four foot, which is a perfectly wide, normal sidewalk width for a residential subdivision. And on the south side, we weren't going to have any sidewalk. We just put in there this, what we call service walks, which are ways for somebody, let's say that a visitor is parking in the driveway. And they're walking around to the front door, that they're going to use, you know, a little sidewalk, that's all. It wasn't meant to be a continuous public sidewalk or anything like that. So I didn't know that Charlie, you were wanting us to widen that to four feet. If we do that, we might have some, you know, some complications with, you know, some of the trees. And, and, and the compressors are there too, in some cases. So, you know, it gets a little tight.
If, if I could respond to the comment that I wanted to see wider streets. I wanted to see streets that complied with the code. That's what I wanted. And I also wanted to see a development with fewer units. So that the streets could comply with the code, as could the sidewalks. That's, so I, I, I want to make clear what I was asking was code compliance, nothing more. So, so there is now a waiver, a required waiver. And an assumption that the sidewalk along the south side of driveway B will have to be four feet wide. I just want to be clear where this matter stands.
If I just jump in real quick. These internal, this is Krista Heiner. The internal roads, if you will, these are sort of like drive aisles within a parking lot. They're not technically public roads. However, the applicant has built them to the minimum requirements for a township road. And I think they're just being, doing their due diligence by requesting the waivers for a road. If they were to be looked at that way. But they are internal drive aisles, like you would see in a parking lot.
However, my understanding was, and maybe I misunderstood. My understanding was that we were asking for all the sidewalks along the road to be four feet. I don't recall ever having a discussion with the planning commission about any three foot wide sidewalks.
Well, they've been on the plan from the beginning, Charlie. There's nothing new and we had a lot of discussion about the road widths and making everything fit. So maybe, I mean, there was nothing intended to not be discussed. I, I mean, I just think we assumed that it was on the plan from the beginning. And it was no, you know, there's been no change. I thought when you said we needed a waiver, you were just bolting suspendering it so that, you know, we could cover. I didn't think we even needed a waiver because it's the south. You don't need it on both sides per the Saldo, you know, we only need it on one side. So that's why I thought you wanted, you know, the waiver from five feet to four feet. But I didn't think you even needed anything for the south side. But I thought you were trying to be very careful and, and, you know, cover it that way. But I, maybe I misunderstood what you were asking for.
I think we will have to determine and the board will have to decide what, what is desired there. I think the problem with three foot sidewalks, regardless of whether they're required or not. Once you have them, they're going to be used. And there was discussion at the planning commission about the fact that three foot is difficult for ADA standards. For strollers, for wheelchairs and things like that. And that was why the planning commission agreed that four feet would be acceptable on the north side. And I think my personal opinion is if you're going to have any sidewalks along the street. They should all be four feet wide. But I, that, that will have to be an issue left to the board.
May I move on to my next concern?
Please.
Okay. If I could draw everyone's attention to the sidewalk that runs perpendicular to Washington Street. That serves as the trail connector, trail access to the public trail that runs along the river. So my understanding is that there is going to be a waiver request. Related to the angled piece of the sidewalk. At the very southern end that connects to the public trail. But isn't it the case that the entire length of that sidewalk serves as a public trail connector? And as such should be 10 feet wide? Isn't that what the code says? The entire length? I'm sorry.
If I may, um, my understanding is that the waiver will be for the full length of that sidewalk. From Washington Street down to the trail, as Sarah indicated. Because the subdivision land development ordinance has a provision that requires that that connection. Also be a 10 foot wide red shale macadam trail. And they are asking and have had on the plan a five foot sidewalk to get to that area. So that waiver will have to be granted in order for this plan to go forward the way it is.
Okay, I, perhaps I misunderstood Sarah's explanation. I thought she was just referring to the, the material, that it was concrete as opposed to red shale macadam. But in fact, what the waiver request is not just material, but a waiver from.
Sedell, we can't hear you very well. It shifted just a moment ago.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
It's about the same.
I'm not sure, I didn't change anything?
Is anybody else having the same difficulty hearing her?
No, same thing, yeah. I'll try muting and then unmuting.
Okay, how about now?
You still faint.
Hear anything I'm saying?
Oh, you're back, you're back.
Who knows? Okay, well knock on wood and hope it stays this way. All right, so I, I just wanted to say that when Sarah explained the waiver. She referred to the material that was being used, concrete versus red shale macadam. But in fact, the waiver has two parts. It's material and a request that they be allowed to create this perpendicular river access. That is half of what the code requires. Is that right? It's a two part waiver?
Yes.
And again, just as was the case with the three foot wide sidewalk. This waiver did not come before the planning commission. Not that I recall. I think I sat in on every one of those, along with Sarah Peck and company and members of the public. I, I don't think these two waivers, either of these waivers came before the planning commission. And my final point is this. Charlie, in the, at the beginning of your introduction here. You said that the zoning hearing board had approved the variances back in February of 2019. I know that there was an extension granted by the zoning hearing board, 180 day extension. I also know that as a result of COVID, the, all of the land use deadlines were told for 30 days. So my arithmetic, when I do all the addition, seems to point to the fact that the variance has expired. And I would just like clarification on that.
The variances have not expired. They asked for an extension pretty much as a belts and suspenders issue. As long as they're going through the land development process, which is one of the conditions of the zoning hearing board. That they pursue that process. And they have been pursuing it since they came out of the zoning hearing board. They really hadn't even expired, so to speak. They asked for an extension just for belts and suspenders while they were still going through. Some of the planning processes with the planning commission. But we have never defined a zoning hearing board decision to expire. When the applicant is actively seeking permission to build either through land development. If that's appropriate or through permits, if that's where they're at. So this has, was extended till last August. But in the township's view, it has not ever expired.
So I would, I appreciate that clarification. And I would suggest that we add to the list of code modifications that have to happen. Something that addresses what the code specifies. And this code here, as I understand it, specifies that the applicant must apply for building permits. Before the expiration of the variance. So that, Charlie, put that on your list because that's.
It's already there.
Okay. And my final comment is, is this, it's just general comment. I, I truly do appreciate the, the effort that went into designing this project. I appreciate that the significant and frightening contamination that remains at the site. Will be remediated. And I trust that it will be remediated in a manner that's consistent with all the codes and requirements of, at all levels. And that it will be closely monitored and all the manifests will be, will be presented. And very clearly indicate that the contamination is, is being disposed of properly. I appreciate the trail that will be built along the riverfront. However, I think that this plan could be made even better. By reducing the number of units and creating the landscape buffer, landscape buffer. On the boat club side to the west. And moving the whole thing back from the riverfront. So I will close with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think Eli Glick was, or I'm sorry, Joe Downey was, you both at the same time. I see Joe first as the next person that had a comment.
Okay, thank you. And just a quick comment. Well, you, you asked a question earlier and I joined for a different reason, right? So just a comment on, you asked about flood insurance and I didn't hear your staff kind of jump in on that, right? So I don't know if it was about mandating it, right? So if it's in a flood plain, I guess you know, as a property owner that has this problem. You have to have it, either if it's, if it's in a flood zone. But the notification of it, and it's up to the tenant or the owner to get their own. If they choose to get it, they probably will have a hard time getting flood insurance if it's not in the flood zone. Or it'll be so cost ineffective. And that's just a, a point I wanted to make. The second is the comment from the young lady who was presenting. As a, somebody who has a boat that I keep on the river down here, right? And to think that you're going to have people, yep, everybody's going to know about it. It's going to work. I guarantee, I pull boats out of the water all the time for people who aren't there. So the, if it does get up that high, I don't, I'm not familiar with the property. But if there's a quick flood on it, people are going to lose stuff in there if it gets that high. Again, I don't know if, if it does get to that point, but I can tell you every summer. I can tell you every summer, I'm pulling boats out of people who are out of town or whatever, so they don't lose their property. So just making a point there, Mike, that I felt that somebody should have helped you with there.
Joe, do you want me to comment on that, if I could?
Um, up to you. I'm, I'm not, again, I, I don't really have a, I'm not like from, I don't know enough about this to give a, a public comment for or against it.
Okay.
But just hearing the comment there that, you know, people will lose stuff in a flood there, it's going to absolutely happen. And whether they can get insurance or not is something I can't answer, but I'm suspect of it if it's not in a flood zone.
Well, just for the sake of the supervisors, um, when, when you build to a certain um standard, you get flood insurance. We're, we have the living spaces are more than a foot above the 100-year flood plain. We're a whole story above practically. So um that coupled with the way we're going to be building the uh garages, like I explained, all masonry and with the uh smart fence, um, will, will definitely enable our, our people to get insurance and the rates will be lower because the risk is less because we've built to certified standards that FEMA has. Um, as far, and there is no, there isn't a quick flood that happens here. This is um because of the nature of the way the river rises and the vast extent of the flood plain here, which if you look on um FEMA maps, you'll see it's enormous. It's actually a very long period of time before the river crests to the point where the floodwaters would rise. There's plenty of time and notice to act. And um, so if you want any more on the flood plain, we have Jim Bannon, our engineer here with us on the, on the call, and he can, he can elaborate. But just so you know, it's not a flash flood situation.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, Eli, you had a comment or question?
My comments uh re- relate to uh the zoning hearing board um meetings, of which I, I went to every one of them. And with regard to flash flooding, it is possible to have flash flooding on the Schuylkill River. It was just a number of years ago where there was a, a, a rain cell that um happened just a little bit north of Conshohocken. It was about six inches of rain in a very short period of time. And there was flooding all along the Conshohocken uh area there. And this was discussed um during the zoning hearing board because uh the, they rightly uh had concerns about um public safety and being able to get people out in time. And we've seen this explosive growth, not so much on the White Marsh side, but on the Conshohocken side, and a tremendous number of uh auto vehi- automotive, automotive vehicles will be um in harm's way. And you know, you're making these comments saying that, yeah, we have plenty of time to get people out. Hmm, maybe not. I mean, we're, we're in the midst of uh having volunteer firefight, firefight firefighters. Our police departments are going to be heavily taxed. You'll have a road that will only be completed um uh in your property frontage. And yes, you'll have an egress coming out of David's Bridle, but what about in the other direction? The road will not be uh fixed um and is fairly rough, almost all the way up to Cherry Street. Um, so, so that's an issue. The biggest concern I have is pertaining to the slab. Um, it was held out um in the um zoning hearing uh meetings that that slab would remain. Um, I asked that question several times, so various engineers that were there. Um, they made, they have, they held out that um any kind of materials that would be planted there, um, there would be some cutouts uh put in the ground, um, or there would be topsoil brought in. And now we're hearing that the slab is going to be removed. And for all intents and purposes, this plan is not the same plan at all that went before the zoning hearing board when they granted the, the waivers that, that are necessary for this project. Without those waivers, we wouldn't be here today. Not waivers, variances. We wouldn't be here today uh to discuss this. So I, I would simply ask the Board of Supervisors to read the transcript of the zoning hearing board meetings that granted the waivers that allowed this project and see for yourself um what was ma- held out uh ab- about the slab. Um, and, and I agree with Sidell, that's important, related to uh whatever toxic materials that may be underneath. You're going to be disturbing this slab um a- and possibly disturbing the soil. And in the event of rain, will that wind up in the, in the river? Um, you know, there's a lot of issues here. And then, of course, will you notify the residents that they are living on top of a brown field? Um, I think that's, you know, is that going to be in the fine print or is that going to be in the print, as it were? Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments?
Okay. Are there any other board comments at the moment?
Yeah, Laura, um, I, I have a question for um, for Sarah. Um, the, the interior roads of this neighborhood that we were talking about before, are they currently the same size as public streets? Or are they smaller because they're interior roads to a neighborhood?
Um, they're 25 foot wide, which is um, I'm trying to get to the plan. Uh, wh- which is more than adequate for two-way uh streets in, in any subdivision. Your code requires a very large, uh, if it was a public street, you're, you're limited in the definitions. And then you might look at that when you're redoing your code because very inflexible to, you know, you don't really want to encourage really wide streets, but I think you have to be 36-foot wide or something. Um, it doesn't, not at all compatible with a residential living. So 25 feet is what you'd see in any subdivision, if not a little wider. Um, you can be as little as 18 feet, 20 feet, 22 feet. We're making it 25 feet, I mean, it's
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? I appreciate everybody's input and time and we certainly want to make a thoughtful decision here. Um, I echo the comments I heard related to the excitement of having, you know, something that looks really appealing and using the waterfront. Um, but we do need to make sure we're doing it the right way. And I'm going to make a suggestion that we table this resolution tonight to uh fine tune, address, look at the waivers that have been brought up tonight with specific attention to let me go back to my notes here. Uh, the width of the, the sidewalks. Uh, there was a, a two-part waiver there. Um, certainly we can go back with Charlie and, and look at these, but those are my thoughts for, for tonight to do that. Um, so I'm going to uh suggest, do I have a motion to table the granting of the conditional preliminary plan approval for the subdivision land development uh oh five fourteen?
I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, everybody, tonight, and look forward to continuing the conversation. Thank you for your time and your good input. Okay. Let's give a minute there for everybody to adjust. Excellent. I was getting a lot of feedback. Can everybody hear me okay? All right. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution 2021 dash oh nine authorizing the corporate authorization for Township Manager Richard R. Miller Jr. to sign documents with the Montgomery County Transportation Authority for the acquisition of right-of-way of 607 Stenton Avenue related to the Montgomery County Cross Trail Project?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nester. This is, uh, we received notification from the county's uh Montgomery County Transportation Authority right-of-way negotiator. Uh, they're requesting that I be a corporate, uh, a corporate resolution be passed, authorizing my signature on behalf of White Marsh Township. This is needed because the Transportation Authority is moving forward with right-of-way acquisitions for county projects, in this case, the Montgomery County College County Trail. Where it impacts the township is the township owns a property along Stenton Avenue, 607 Stenton, uh where we purchased the property using FEMA flood mitigation money. The county has been working basically for a little over two years trying to secure permission from FEMA to allow uh porous pavement to be allowed on this parcel, uh given the fact that we acquired it with hazard mitigation funds. Uh, about last week, they received, finally received notice from FEMA that they uh received permission to utilize this property for that purpose. Uh, they will then need me being an authorized signer, once the township has reviewed plans and they've been approved by the board.
Thank you. Do we have any board comments? Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, Mr. Miller, will you please call the roll?
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Dreisner?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt resolution 2021 dash 10, amending the 2021 fee schedule to include fees related to commercial building inspections?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Nester. Uh, this is something that we've been talking about at our workshop meetings uh related to commercial building inspect, inspections program that our Fire Marshal Nick Weaver has put together. I'm going to turn it over to, to Nick. Um, as about two months ago, we adopted the, maybe three months ago, we adopted the 2015 um fire code that provided Nick a lot of authorization, um, that he had teeth if he had to um, you know, to have any compliance with regards to that code. One of the other things it allows is for him to, to enter properties in the capacity of Fire Marshal for fire safety. And that's what this all has to do is making sure that our commercial properties are safe uh for those that are working in them, as well as the, any first responder that would responding to it. So as part of that program, the program can be put in place. This is the fee piece of it, which we would have to amend our fee schedule by resolution. So I'm going to turn it over to our Fire Marshal Nick Weaver and have him explain a little bit about the program uh that he has proposed. Nick?
Thanks, Rick. Uh, yeah, I've come here tonight to, with proposal of the resolution to amend the fee schedule. And I'll give a little background of the program that Rick's already just spoke about. In the past, it's been a reactive program. Uh, when we get complaints from citizens or business owners or constituents, or if we, God forbid, have to go to a fire incident or, or EMS or police report a problem. Uh, we've been very reactive and we're trying to do this to a proactive approach for fire and life safety. And the point of it is to reduce risk, ensure co-compliance, promote partnerships with businesses, and gather vital information for our first responders. Uh, we mentioned this is for commercial businesses and properties. It is not meant for residences. Don't worry, and it's something my concern, I'm not showing up at your door, at your single house, rental house, and knocking on it trying to get entry. That's not what this is about. It is, with this program, we will get a decent business list of our community. We've been working on that currently. Uh, there's over 1,500 commercial properties, non-residential properties, that we want to get to ensure that the, those areas are safe for not only the owners, the employees, but the constituents. The fees that I have proposed with the program were based on evaluation of surrounding municipalities and past practices they've had and what works for them and what has not. It's based on the size of the businesses, as well as how, with the, with the size, an estimation of how much time it would take to do an inspection. So a smaller business, let's say the size of my office, is significantly less than, let's say, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Fort Washington, up on Kentville Road. So that is where the fees are developed from. And there's also a part of the fee schedule for reinspection fees if there are people that either refuse to comply, and that's one of the, the second or third steps before we actually go to citations, because we want code compliance, we want safety. We do not want to be citing anyone. We don't want to be issuing any notice of violations. We just want to promote safety in the community.
And Nick, can you also talk about um notification out to the business community, your, your outreach?
Sorry about that, Rick. Yep. Uh, I, I proposed this late last year and the board asked me to reach out to the business community, which I felt was an amazing idea. I hadn't even thought of or so focused of in the books, let's say. And I contacted the Colonial Business Association, which is now part of the, a Chamber of Commerce in Montgomery County. And I met with their representatives and actually sent letters out to all the businesses that were on their registry and the current businesses we had on the list. And most of my responses were actually, when can you come out and do my inspection? They're trying to schedule them rather than inquire about the program. I did discuss with two businesses about the program and some questions about it. And I was able to explain what, what the program is about, in addition to what the letter was sent out.
Excellent. And it sounds like, from what I understand, you're already getting bookings for this, for the inspections for a lot of the commercial properties, right?
Yes, I've actually had daycares lined up even uh last month, because they're actually required to have inspections anyway by the state, as well as other facilities of high hazards. And I'm saying daycare is high hazard, but it has requirements for childcare. And I asked them if they'd just hold on until we adopt the program so we can get everything done the same way in 2021.
Excellent. Thanks, Nick. Do we have any board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, Mr. Miller, will you please call the roll?
Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Dreisner?
Yes.
Chair Nester?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going down to motions and Kim, thank you for your patience.
Do I have a motion to approve an Act 153 open space grant to the White Marsh Foundation in the amount of $37,200 for the maintenance of the Dixon Meadow Preserve at Erdenheim Farm?
I'm moved. Second.
Um, Chair Nester, if I could just uh tee this up a little bit here for uh, for Ms. Shepherd. Uh, we received the quest, a request from the President of the White Marsh Foundation, Kim Shepherd, uh on behalf of the White Marsh Foundation to utilize Act 153 funds for the maintenance of the Dixon Meadow Preserve. And let me just explain Act 153 funds. Act 153 is the act that allows for a quarter percent of our earned income tax to be utilized for the purchase, acquisition of open space. Uh, in this case, when Erdenheim Farm was purchased in different capacities and so on and so forth, uh, one of the areas that was purchased utilizing Act 153 is the area that is at the corner of Thomas Road and Flower Town Road, uh which we call um the Dixon Meadow Preserve. So with that, um, that kind of gives an explanation of what these funds and where they're coming from. You're permitted, under the law, Act 153, to utilize portion of those funds for maintenance, therefore the request from the White Marsh Foundation. And with that, Kim, I'll turn it over to you and I will put up your presentation to go through.
All right, thank you, Rick. I'll, I'll wait for the presentation to come up, but I want to thank everybody for um for this consideration. I know, um, you know, it's been a long evening and uh we've been through the process of the Open Space Committee, who recommended to the Board of Supervisors that this um funding be accepted and um, and also the Environmental Advisory Board also recommended this be accepted. So this is uh, this is where we are now. So as, uh, Rick gave a fine description of the um, there we go. Rick gave a fine description of how we came to be, so I will just give a very brief presentation because um you have an awful lot on your plate. Uh, in 2001, a 501(c)(3) was created um by a group of concerned residents for the preservation of Erdenheim Farm. Uh, so we worked very hard in conjunction with uh the township and many others So we worked very hard in conjunction with the township and many others to see that this happened. In two thousand eight, we were able to purchase the ninety eight acre Angus track, as Rick said, with the help of White Marsh Township, who donated two million dollars of the Act one fifty three funding. In two thousand nine, we purchased ninety one acres of the Sheep Track. There's about eighteen acres that is owned by McCoslin family, those are the sheep, the sheep barn and the outbuildings. Two thousand fourteen, we created the Dixon Meadow Preserve because we wanted to address some stormwater management that was coming through the Angus Track. And once we did that, we determined that we had taken the property out of agricultural use, we might as well make something special out of it, which we did, which is the Dixon Meadow Preserve. So it has a water element to it. It's created a lot of opportunity for new migratory patterns for birds and other wildlife and diverse habitat to find us. In two thousand sixteen, we renovated the Dixon Meadow House. The house is an eighteen fifties farm house. It's one of the original in White Marsh Township. So we have taken that, we renovated that and has won, we have won a national award for that renovation. And it is now our headquarters and it is where we host educational programs and we host those programs with, in part with White Marsh Township as well as with others.
Excuse me, Kim, I'm sorry, Kim, who is, are you controlling the PowerPoint? I don't know, or Rick?
No, that's me.
Oh, Ricky.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So...
I think we're on the next slide. She was going through the timeline.
Oh, yeah, you know, I was actually just speaking, but because I know the presentation so well, I'm so sorry. Why don't you, Rick, if you could just bring those slides up and I'll pay attention to the slides so that we can all go along.
Can you see the slides on the TV, on the screen?
Yeah, so, so I think if you go to number three, that's probably where we are right now.
This is number three that I have here.
Oh, okay.
We're seeing one, we're seeing the cover, we're seeing the cover photo. Rick, we're seeing that White Marsh Foundation founded two thousand and one.
You have to click enable editing at the top.
Oh, there you go. Great. So that's one of the, that's, you'll see that particular photograph is one that we're doing with the Parks and Rec Program. And we've been asked by Environmental Advisory Board if we would have some programs with them as well, which we are delighted to do. So we'll be having more programs and more educational opportunities with them. So, all right, we could go to number four now. Okay, so the result, which hopefully all of you have seen, and if anybody hasn't within the township, anybody that's watching this presentation is certainly welcome to call me and anybody that is on the board, I would love to give any type of walkthrough once, you know, once it's better weather, to show you what we've done. So the Fourteen Nature Preserve has certainly become exemplary by anyone's standard. We have put interpretive signage down there for any education. As I mentioned earlier, we have a stormwater management program in place, which we will continue to evolve. We're working on a strategic plan right now and that is a portion of it, quite a major portion of it. As I mentioned, the water element that we have attracts avian and other wildlife and all of our, the avian population that comes there is recorded and then given to the coin out on Ethological Lab. And they also keep track of all the new migratory patterns that are created. And we've had many rare bird sightings as well, where people are coming from other states and to see what we have there. We've planted native species to feed and repopulate wildlife, such as much milkweed from monarch butterflies, blue birdhouses, et cetera, so that we are trying to make this... We're trying to repopulate some of that wildlife that has dissipated in past years. Rick, you can scoot to the next slide or move it up. So as, as Rick had stated, we respectfully request, given the fact that this boardwalk has now become quite an amenity within township, I can tell you that it was always a lovely birding site. It was, it was always an area that people would come to visit, but particularly since COVID, our parking area is somewhat limited. We have eight legal spots that certainly accommodates a little more than that. I think with the oversight of the township, we have done a good job at maintaining limited access to the, to the preserve, but allowing people to come down there, it has become quite popular. And we spend, you know, over seventy five thousand dollars annually on this and we are asking for fifty percent to come from this Act one fifty three funding that is put aside specifically for maintenance of those properties that were helped be purchased, which of course this was. So this is a request for one year. I think in other presentations, we've had the conversation that we would like to come back each year because we're working on making this better and more mature and more user friendly. And, but it, it seems appropriate to ask one year at a time. This is, these photographs that you see are part of what, just a very small sampling of what has become a very special place in White Marsh Township. So I thank you very much for your time and I appreciate your consideration and would be happy to answer any questions.
And just as, as Kim mentioned in her presentation, this did in fact go and receive recommendations from our Open Space Committee as well as the Environmental Advisory Board.
Could you explain how maintenance has been funded previously?
By White Marsh Foundation, you mean specifically where we get the funding from? It has been funded by White Marsh Foundation and we are a five oh one C three that raises all funds that we spend.
So no prior township funds have been used for maintenance to this?
That's correct. Yeah, oh, I forgot to mention, I beg your pardon, as part of our partnership of the preserve, the township built the boardwalk. They built the boardwalk and they laid the macadam for the trail, so it is completely ADA compliant. Along with this request, although not coupled with the request, we have offered to take responsibility for the boardwalk. And in taking responsibility, the Public Works Department is now responsible for the maintenance of the boardwalk as well as the macadam trail. We would like to take responsibility for that. This is apart from what that seventy five thousand dollars that we spent last year has to offer. And we have a, a donor that has come forward with a one hundred thousand dollars for us that will allow us to replace the spindles on the boardwalk. And with the township's approval of what we determine appropriate and new determine appropriate, we would replace that and we would shore up the boardwalk so that it is just a little more sturdy and a little more stable going forward. And we would also hire those professionals to come in twice a year to oversee the boardwalk. So this removes the township, of the burden of the Public Works Department coming in and having to work on the boardwalk and the macadam. So we have raised all the funds necessary to date. The township has been responsible for the boardwalk and the macadam trail. So we would take responsibility for all of it. Is, I thank you for seeing that up.
Yeah, but let me, let me follow on. So you're, you're proposing that the foundation assume responsibility for the boardwalk and for the walkway?
Yes.
For improvement as well as maintenance?
Yes.
And is that in perpetuity?
Yes.
In return for the township's contribution this year of the requested amount?
Yes, although, although one really has nothing to do with the other, we're just offering that and we would like to have the relationship with the township, given that it has become truly a township amenity and it is literally on your website as such as a partnership with us. So we would like...
And I've, and I've actually been known to use it as a background on my Zoom as well.
Well, I'm delighted. Please, please feel free anytime. So, so the, I guess the, the point is, we felt at, at this stage, given that we were spending, no, forgetting the boardwalk and forgetting the macadam, we, the foundation itself was spending upwards of more than seventy five thousand dollars a year. So with the request of the fifty percent, if we spend less than the thirty seven thousand, obviously we would give you all of the invoices and show you what we were spending the monies on. If we spend less than that, you would not be responsible for thirty seven thousand dollars. If we spent more than that, you would not be responsible for anything above that. We're just trying to establish relations with this Act one fifty three funding so that we can work together and, and make the best amenity possible for the township.
So, Rick, do we have a sense of what it costs the township to maintain those areas?
I don't have those numbers with me. We could certainly gather those numbers with respect to the boardwalk. You know, we would do if there, as Kim alluded to, any of those spindles that would kind of come loose, we would fix them. If any of the planks would come loose, we would fix them. We did do some, Krista, I believe would know this, some underboring there to, you know, over the years, but this has spread over several years. We also, as far as the path went, we did some recoding of the path as annual maintenance. But to answer your question, I don't know what that number would be. I could certainly bet it for you.
I think more than, this is just a perception, this is looking from the outside in, which means absolutely nothing because Rick would know better than I, but it, it seems that even more than the, the funding itself, relieving the Public Works Department of this responsibility, given how much they have on their plate within the township, means quite a bit. And, and I'm putting words in anyone's mouth, so if anyone wants to comment on that, but that's a perception that I have, that these guys work, these people work really hard and, and this is something that they do a good job with, but it's hard, it's hard. It's hard to fit in because it's not part of the routine that we all...
Thank you.
Sorry about that, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yep, you can hear me.
Okay. So can you just tell me? What were the questions?
Yep, we're at a point right now where we're still taking any public comment and I believe that there's one so far that requested it on the chat, Mr. Kaufman, would like to make a public comment.
Okay, please go ahead.
As I assume I'm that person?
Yes.
Ray, my highest chair of the Open Space Committee, there's certainly a lot of very positive aspects about this. One is that even though this is on, quote, private land, it's been maintained as a public facility, an important amenity for the township. There's also, I think, a continuing program, not sure Kim mentioned all of this because I disappeared to have a little bit of dinner, but there's a continuing program of improvement and plenty of new plugs, et cetera, so that some of this budget goes to actual improvement. And I'm also under the impression that that boardwalk is going to be needing stabilization and certainly maintaining the paved trail, which paving being a requirement for accessibility is, is very important. So Open Space was enthusiastic about it and was also just impressed about the fact this is a unique kind of meadow habitat that's being well maintained. And if you ever go there, the bird population is astounding. The other thing I want to note is that, and I'll wrap this up, is that despite our enthusiasm, it did strike some of us, and now I'm sort of taking off my hat as the chair and putting on a personal hat, struck some of us that we are in need, and that is township in general is in need of standards for evaluating proposals like this. Because there's potentially, right now, our Open Space Fund is flush, but there's potentially competing needs here, both in terms of maintenance and, and acquisition dollars. When I think of maintenance, I think of Gambon and I guess it's, do we call that Joshua Knoll, which I don't think has received any improvements unless I'm misinformed. So we have to think more broadly about, you know, our Open Space Program and also applying criteria to, to requests for maintenance funds. So the, the committee, Open Space Committee, is going to have a little sex agenda talking about putting together some standards. And I'm assuming that if we come up with something, that would go to the Board of Supervisors. We would not operate in a vacuum. But I think it's important for both the Open Space and EAB, which has definitely has a role here, and the Board of Supervisors to have a little bit of a rulebook for future applications, both from White Marsh and other entities, including the township.
Thank you. I appreciate that comment. Do we have any other public comments? All right.
Eli's, Larry Eli's way to the corner.
Go ahead.
So I'd like to speak in opposition to the granting of these funds for four main reasons. I'm going to list them so that those are listed on the minutes, hopefully will be listed in the minutes, and I'd like to go through briefly each one. Number one is that the Dixon Preserve is run by the White Marsh Foundation, which appears from the financials presented, flush with money. For all intents and purposes, number two, for all intents and purposes, the Dixon Preserve and the White Marsh Foundation are an extension of the Hill at White Marsh. Number three, no township control over how our tax dollars are, are spent here is being allowed. Number four, our township Open Space land is in desperate need of funding for upkeep and should be a priority, other lands, that is. So back to number one. The Dixon Preserve is run by the White Marsh Foundation. As has been pointed out, the White Marsh Foundation is responsible for upkeep and management of the Dixon Preserve. While it is a not-for-profit organization, it's clearly been successful in raising funds for day-to-day operations. Its foundation is flush with capital and money from the, and the money from the township is not needed. Number two, for all intents and purposes, the Dixon Preserve and the White Marsh Foundation are extension of the Hill at White Marsh. Dixon Preserve and the White Marsh Foundation came to be in a somewhat complicated process that included the development of the Hill at White Marsh. It cannot be considered separately. The Hill uses the Dixon Preserve in its marketing materials. Access to the Preserve includes entrances from the Hill property itself. The Hill and the White Marsh Foundation have collaborated in development process, much to the detriment of the near neighbors who live on Fountain Green Drive. The temporary construction road, which is still in place, has caused much grief to the neighbors. The view shed of the Dixon Preserve is primarily for the residents of the Hill. There is no question that this is a magnificent property. Unfortunately, what landscaping and maintenance is done at the Dixon Preserve first and foremost must appease the residents of the Hill. The claim that the Dixon Preserve ponds somehow provide stormwater protection for downstream properties is just not true. Since the development of the Hill, we have witnessed large amounts of new floodwaters heading directly to the Wisahickin Creek. Stormwater originates in part at the Hill and goes directly into the Dixon Preserve. From the Preserve, the water then follows into the Sheep Track, under and over Flower Town Road and into the Wisahickin Track before emptying into the Wisahickin. That extra stormwater from the Hill picks up fecal matter and other pollutants from the Erdenheim livestock before going into the creek. The bottom line is, the Hill at White Marsh and the White Marsh Foundation have not been particularly neighborly to the residents of White Marsh Township. Number three, no township control over how our tax dollars are spent. I have not seen any member of the White Marsh Board of Supervisors or township staff be offered a seat on the board of the White Marsh Foundation. Recently, use of Open Space dollars and easement was obtained for the Highlands. The township gave over a million dollars to the Highland Society with some, although I think not enough township control. There are no such controls of how township money would be spent on the Dixon Preserve. Other township Open Space land is in desperate need of funding for... Other township open space land is in desperate need of funding for upkeep and should be a priority, and this is probably the most important piece. There are other lands within White Marsh, White Marsh Township that are in desperate need of maintenance funding. These lands should be a priority. The Well Street Park, also known as the Gambon Track, receives very little maintenance beyond the running of a biannual half-day volunteer events. It has tremendous potential for residents to have woodland and high meadow experience. Unfortunately, access to the park is difficult with the entry trail requiring a stream crossing with difficult footing. A bridge has been proposed by Parks and Rec but has continuously delayed, has been delayed and put off. And also, the many steep slope trails continue to wash out due to storms and poor management. Properties known as East Thirty-Three, Joshua Hill, and the FEMA properties along the Wissahican Creek are all sites that have received little to no financial attention. These properties could provide residents with special environmental experiences. They also, if well-maintained, would provide important habitat and waterway protection. These properties would serve far more residents than Dixon Preserve and are deserving of the money. Open Space funds are intended for the betterment of all White Marsh residents, and as such, they should be used more wisely. I hope you'll vote against this request. Thank you.
I believe Linda Dahl had a comment.
Okay. Yes, I, uh, had no opinion one way or another until I heard Eli and Steve Kaufman speak. And I guess I'm kind of agreeing with them that this is a separate nonprofit foundation that should be taken care of itself and not be funded by the township, that it sounds like there's many more projects that the township can be using the, the open space money for, for the township. And I guess how I relate it is that I'm on the Colonial School District Education Foundation, and we're a nonprofit, just like this foundation is, and we don't get money from the school district. We do our separate thing and raise the money separately and donate it to the school district. And so I'm really not seeing how White Marsh should be funding a separate nonprofit. Thank you.
Just to clarify, Linda, I, I don't think that's what Steve said. I thought Steve is the head of Open Space. I thought that, Steve, I thought you approved of the use of these funds. Am I correct, or do you think we, or do you object to the use of these funds?
Uh, hang on a second. I'm just trying to get myself on the screen. I'm, I'm listening, Michael. Um, Open Space definitely, uh, approved of, of the use of these funds.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just want to make sure I had that straight.
Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out, Michael, because I did not, I missed that.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I did go on to say that it's important to have criteria in the future for looking at these various uses. Uh, and that's, that's, that's a totally separate matter.
Gotcha. Thank you, Steve. I just wanted to just clarify.
No, thank you.
And does the board have any questions, uh, of me from Mr. Glitt's statements? Because there are a couple there that just are not accurate, and if you would like me to address them, I would. And the township did receive an easement from the Hill at White Marsh as part of this funding agreement that will allow the township trail to go through the Hill property so that it could connect into the other trail through, um, I believe it's the four or five school. I'm not sure what that elementary school on Joshua Road is. So there is, you know, there's, um, the other funds, the, and this is, I guess you know this, the other, um, properties that Mr. Glitt brings up, uh, were not purchased with the Act one fifty-three funding. Um, and the fact that saying that the Hill at White Marsh is the same as White Marsh Foundation just is not true in any sense of the word. We do use our mark, us for, um, our property for marketing, and so did the township, and so do many others. You know, we've allowed that to happen because we are a neighbor and a township amenity. And the fact that we've been successful in our fundraising should certainly not be an impediment. It should, it should be, it's there for future use. Um, I, I don't know. I just, I, I don't understand why Mr. Glitt has an issue with it, but so be it. Um, if anybody has any questions about anything that's been said, I'm happy to answer them. I just feel like that was a little bit, uh, disingenuous and, and not correct.
So Kim, I, I have a question. Um, are, are you suggesting, or are you amenable to the township? Uh, you mentioned the receipts. Are you amenable to the township having full insight into an audit rights related to the expenditure of any funds that we would grant?
Of course. I, I expected that you would. I would not, you know, I don't think this is a blank check. This is a, yes.
And are we, are we all clear that any, um, award of, of funds at this stage, uh, is not to be interpreted in any way to, uh, to obligate us to do so in future years?
Are you asking me that question, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That is exactly right. We're, we're doing, going to do this on an annual basis, and I'm hopeful that it will be very successful and won't go bad. But in the discussions that we had with the other committees, if, if, um, the need arose for, now, I know that there's separate maintenance and there's separate purchasing funds within the Act fifty-three, but if the funds were needed for something else, that would be at the discretion of the board, which is why we're doing this on an annual basis so that nobody feels that they're locked in perpetuity.
Yeah, I just want to be clear that no one is, is expecting this to set a precedent for future years.
And I think, you know, I think the White Marsh Foundation hopes that it is, right? I think they hope that it's going to be successful. I think EAB feels that way, and Open Space feels that way, that this is a good use of funds to help, you know, have the White Marsh Foundation hire experts to care for this property and, um, you know, it's, it's Kim detailed, uh, but I do appreciate Vince, you know, clarifying because, you know, we don't know how, how it's going to go, right? So I think it's good to consider this for the year and do it for the year. The hope is that it's, you know, a long-term relationship that can continue, and it's worthwhile for the township, for the neighbors, and for that property itself. But, you know, we, we can make that decision as we see, you know, how the year goes.
Thank you to everybody and their comments. Um, do we have any other public comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Very much. Appreciate it.
Do I have a motion to approve the allocation of funds collected from the annual clothing drive to the Colonial Neighborhood Council in the amount of five hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, mute, Rick.
Got me. Zoom got me.
It's okay. I'm glad I'm not the only one who's having some tech issues.
That's pretty good. All day, I've been on like five Zooms, so that was the first.
Don't even say anymore.
Thank you Supervisor Drosner. Um, so this is exciting news that we have. This is the result of the Martin Luther King Junior Day Drive for the, um, clothing drive that we've had. This is, we have a third year, um, and by far, by way and far, are most successful. Um, we, the Public Works, or excuse me, the Park and Rec Department did an excellent job of coordinating this at Cedar Grove Barn. We received, uh, excellent, um, participation from residents, from anyone involved who, uh, were cleaning out, uh, their, their closets and donated those to a very good cause. Um, as a result of that, uh, we received an amount of money, uh, that we will be donating to the Colonial Neighborhood Council, which is in nearby Contra Hocken, in the amount of five hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Excellent. Positive news. Really truly thrilled to hear about this. Do we have any board comments? Any public comments?
I just have a question. Linda Dahl, do they figure out that by poundage of clothes? Is that how they do that?
It, it is. It is.
So how many, do you know how many?
Uh, we had over eleven hundred bags of clothes.
Wow. Thank you.
And, and I think our previous high was not even five hundred.
Yeah, I think it was double, like, from something close to that. Mm-hmm. Impressive. Thank you, White Marsh. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the addendum to the contract with Bergman Associates in the amount of thirty thousand dollars to continue providing consulting services for the implementation of the Selective Comprehensive Plan Update?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nestor. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Gotten Plan, who has been, uh, working on this, uh, on behalf of township and staff. Um, and we're really excited, I will say, to, uh, to start the implementation of the Selective Comprehensive Plan Update. So with that, I'll let Mr. Gotten Plan go over our next steps.
Thank you very much. Uh, this is a bit, little follow-up to, um, a discussion we had at last week's departmental workshop. Um, this contract amendment, um, would allow Bergman Associates to continue, um, with us. Uh, as I think everyone on the board and most of the public that have been involved know, Bergman, um, wrote the Comprehensive Plan Selective Update with the township, and this would be an extension of their current contract to work on the first phase of implementation, which is, um, the first phase of the zoning update. The, um, contract would be, uh, the addendum is in the amount of not to exceed thirty thousand dollars for a period of one year, consistent with, um, the township's adopted capital budget. Uh, the scope of work, which is in the, um, addendum, is general in nature and with the understanding that it will be clarified and honed in on with staff and other township officials and the steering committee, uh, that will be appointed to work on this, um, with Bergman. The contract amendment has been reviewed by Sean's office. Um, certain edits were made. They were acceptable to Bergman Associates, and the contract addendum that you have in front of you, um, is consistent with all those, um, minor edits. Um, Bergman Associates would be available, um, once this is approved to begin to start this implementation, um, as soon as March first. And we're hoping with approval that we can get going. I think we all understand how important some of these zoning updates are through our discussions about various development proposals, and I think we're all excited to finally get started on this. So this is really where the rubber meets the road.
No pun intended there, Charlie?
No.
Um, I agree. I, this is really exciting to get to this point and want to continue. Um, you know, I appreciate that this group has already become very familiar with the Comprehensive Plan, and Charlie, we, you already mentioned tonight, you already have an active list of things that are on your plate to make sure that we're addressing. Um, do we have any public comments or, or comments at the moment? Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the appointment of the following individual to, I'm sorry, do I have a motion to approve the appointment of John Von Hessen to the Historical Architectural Review Board, term ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
I see Mr. Von Hessen here. I certainly don't want to put anybody on the spot. John, if you feel comfortable and want to say hello, you're welcome to do that, but no pressure.
I'm Laura. Just say, yeah, John applied, um, I think it was in twenty nineteen. Um, we spoke last year when we were doing the twenty-twenty appointments, and we just couldn't find the space for him. Um, and so I talked to him again in early January. He was still interested, uh, primarily in HAR. He sat in on yesterday's meeting. Uh, he's, he's excited to join the board and contribute.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other board comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the resignation of the following individuals and thank them for their years of service? Luanne Merkel from the Environmental Advisory Board and Yassin Salami from the Environmental Advisory Board. And I just want to personally say thank you for their passion, uh, especially Luanne. I've come to know her over the years, and I really appreciate your passion and dedication to the environment, and thank her for her time.
So moved.
Second.
Any board comments? Any public comments?
I have a comment. Um, the EAB, uh, as a result of these resignations, now has two new openings. It is unfortunate, especially given the work and effort Luanne put into, uh, the position on behalf of the township. Yassin, I don't think lasted, uh, more than, uh, two meetings. Um, it is also unfortunate that the last two appointees to the EAB never came to a single prior meeting, and both acknowledged at the last EAB meeting that neither had any environmental experience at all. As you now know, I'm sure, I have submitted an application to be on the Environmental Advisory Board. I have attended virtually every meeting in the last three years and actively participate from the audience. Recently, I have joined the EAB Land Stewardship Working Group. Um, as you can see from my application, I bring a tremendous amount of knowledge about environmental matters, and I believe would be an important asset to the board and our township. That said, in the past, when I was the only applicant to the Shade Tree Commission, you refused my application stating that I was too caustic. This despite my knowledge and my audience participation in meetings. At the last Board of Supervisors meetings, you mentioned the traits you look for in choosing a resident to participate. One that sticks out to me was your mention of being professional. Well, for me, that works both ways. Has the township behaved in a professional way in dealing with members of boards and commissions and the general public? Let's start with what does it mean to be professional. To me, it means by starting with telling the unvarnished truth in all matters. It also means communicating in an open and honest way. That should start with the minutes that reflect what people actually say. It should not mean re-characterizing what a resident says at any meeting. It could also mean owning up to mistakes when they occur. Being professional also means being an honest broker of how meetings are handled. There should be no attempt to control or manage any message set forth from board or commission, such as trying to end the various working groups on the EAB. There should be a capability for the township to listen to criticisms and grow from those experiences instead of getting defensive. If these things can't be done, I think you will chase away good and qualified people and perhaps make other people caustic. I hope you will, I hope you might begin to do things differently by filling vacant board and commission seats with truly qualified individuals, regardless of their party affiliation or your personal perception of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other comments? Okay, yes.
Um, excuse me. I attended the, the EAB meeting and listened to Luanne's letter of resignation. Oh, excuse me, one moment, please. Haven't spoken through all this meeting time. I listened to Luanne's letter of resignation, and I was, I was upset by it, and I'm not really sure exactly what all the background was behind it. Um, I don't know exactly what was said to whom, but it, it did come up in that discussion that there was this suggestion to discontinue the working groups. Um, I believe there may have been some perception that the working groups are asking for too much. Um, perhaps it's received as we're trying to make more work for people. I'm not sure exactly what this is about. It, it's concerning to me because I've, I've volunteered with the Land Stewardship Working Group. Um, before that, I've worked with the Greenhouse Program. I've been coming to Shade Tree meetings. I've, I've contributed in a number of ways, and there are others who've been contributing. Um, generally speaking, everybody who's coming to these things and, and providing their input is doing this, as best I can see, not to make more work for anybody. is doing this, as best I can see, not to make more work for anybody. We're trying to find better ways to make the township better for everybody here. So this isn't a special interest group. This is a common interest group when you're talking about the Environmental Advisory Board and all of the volunteers who have come to these working groups to support their efforts. I'm hoping that we can reduce some of this friction that appears to be happening between the township and people who are making recommendations. I know that sometimes the emotions start to get high on either side. And it's uncomfortable. It's uncomfortable for everybody involved. And some people really do walk away from this. I keep coming back. I don't know how I keep coming back sometimes. But it's important to me that we get past this and try to find ways to keep people who are really making a serious contribution. I know that for all the things that I've recommended and all the things that I've complained about, I don't expect to have instant results to anything. I don't expect that everything I ask for is going to be done. I expect some back and forth. And if we're coming on with too much at once, there should be some kind of feedback to talk to us about that. The resolution that was put together by the Land Steward Working Group hasn't really been addressed point by point. We did come up with the low-hanging fruit to try to come up with some easy things to address right away. I haven't heard any of these things really being discussed. But the first thing that I heard is let's think about closing down the working groups. I think that this is an ongoing process. It's not, it's not as though we've come up with a list of resolutions and so we're done. I'm hoping that we can work together to help you find ways to implement the things that are already listed in the comprehensive plan. When the township has the ability to hire professionals, ecological professionals, and I know that you're starting to do that with the Basin Project, it needs to be done at so many different levels and so many different directions. And it's not just the land stewardship. It's also the renewable energy. It's an ongoing thing. We've made some proposals. I'm hoping that we'll have a way of continuing forward where we don't feel like we have so many things to fix that we're throwing everything at you at once. We're starting to address things one at a time and making a difference rather than having this conflict. So I think that covers everything and thank you for listening very much.
Thank you, Sam.
Sam, just so you know, there was no recommendation from the township to disband working groups. I mean, the Chair of the EAB just sent an email to the other board members to say, what's the plan for this year? What do you think? What should we do? Should we keep them? Should we change them? Should we get rid of them? It was merely a discussion point. We had the discussion, and I think you were at the board meeting the other week, but I can't recollect. We talked about it. You know, I think people were still in favor of keeping them. So, you know, disbanding them was not something that came from the township, wasn't suggested or recommended by the township, and I don't think that's what's going to happen.
Okay. Do we have any other comments? Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve a hold harmless agreement for a sign in the ultimate right-of-way at 27 East Germantown Pike?
No moves. Second.
Mr. Mellor? Oh, Charlie. I know this screen.
Yeah, this is at 27 East Germantown Pike in the Historic District. This is recently changed ownership. Tom Robbins, who's on the call this evening, owns this property. He has a financial consulting business affiliated with Ameriprise Financial, and he is proposing a sign 12 feet back from the curb, a monument sign consistent with the VC district. However, it's still technically in the ultimate right-of-way and therefore needs a hold harmless agreement. This is a better idea of what the sign will look like and where it will sit on the lawn. It has been reviewed by Krista Heinrich, Township Engineer. She did an analysis. You have a memo in your packets showing that, in her opinion, will not hinder site distance in either direction, and therefore she recommended approval of it. And therefore, we would ask that the board approve this hold harmless agreement this evening.
Thank you. Do we have any board question comments? Do we have any public comments?
Well, I just, as the owner of the property, I'd just like to thank the board for their time. Looking forward to restoring, renovating this building and moving my business into White Marsh Township. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
This is Sedell Zo. I just have a question. The applicant will be submitting plans for the renovation and expansion of this property. But the fact that those plans have yet to be submitted does not mean that he cannot proceed with this sign. It seems like putting the cart before the horse. I just want to make sure that things are not out of sequence here.
He will still have to go through the land development process and receive any permits that he has to receive and eventually a use and occupancy permit. So this is just so that he can go ahead and install the sign, have it made and install it when it's ready. That doesn't give him authority to necessarily occupy the building.
Okay, so the sign could be installed before he even commences the renovation and expansion. Is that correct?
If that's his choice, I don't see any reason he can't.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that clarification. Do we have any other comments? All right, hearing, seeing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
I couldn't see everybody. There we go. So those opposed, always good. Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, Tom.
Okay, we have a couple escrow releases next. Do I have a motion to authorize escrow release number one for Seventh LLC, 1032 East Hector Street, in the amount of $230,232.78?
So moved.
No move. Second.
Krista?
Good evening. This is a mixed-use small, partially offices and commercial, partially rental units at Lee and Hector Streets. The applicant requested partial release of certain items of improvements. We inspected the site and found them to be constructed in accordance with the plan and are recommending this partial release of financial security.
Thank you. Do we have any board comments? Any public comments? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize escrow release number three for Phase Three of the Oaks at Lafayette Hill Cedar Grove Road in the amount of $18,171? No sense.
So moved. Second.
Krista?
Thank you again. This is for the Oaks at Lafayette Hill. This is the large townhome development off of Cedar Grove Road. There are various phases of this and you'll see a separate phase of it in our next item on the agenda. But we inspected the request and found the improvements to have been constructed in accordance with the plan. And so we are recommending release of $18,171.
Thank you. Is that project near complete?
I would say it's near complete. For this particular phase, there's still $105,000 remaining. This is their first request for this phase of the project.
Any board comment, question? Any public comment?
I have a question. This is Sedell Zo, a question for Krista. You qualified this by saying this is, there's $105,000 remaining in this phase? How many more phases are there and how much more retention is there?
There are three phases. Phase Three was escored separately from Phase One and Two, which will be the next agenda item. This phase, the total escored amount was $285,000 and change. So it seems like they're about a third of the way through Phase Three. And then I guess I'll reserve the amounts for the other phase and the next portion of the agenda.
So these phases aren't sequential. They overlap. Is that the case?
Yeah, it's all one project. It's just how the financial security was cut up, if you will. So they're just different agreements.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize escrow release number seven for the Oaks at Lafayette Hill Cedar Grove Road in the amount of $142,388.56?
No move. Second.
And this is the other portion that we were referencing before. This is for Phase One and Two. The total amount that was escored was $2,342,452.29. And after this release, there will be $795,960.55 remaining.
Thank you. Any board comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $1,822,237.36 and payroll totaling $665,364.90 for January 2021?
Second.
Any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-11 authorizing Burckheimer as the township's deputy real estate tax collector for the collection of township and county real estate taxes? Mr. Mellor?
Sorry.
Sorry, yeah, go ahead and finish that process.
No move.
Second.
I was on a roll there.
You were. Thank you, Chair Nestor. This is, as we did last month, when the board appointed Burckheimer as the tax collector for the local real estate taxes as well as the county real estate taxes. Our Finance Director, Kevin Baron, has been working with Burckheimer on that process in order to have the tax bills out at the end of this month and beginning of March. As part of this and having Burckheimer as the collector, they must be named as the deputy tax collector by resolution. We received the paperwork from them this week. We reviewed this with the Solicitor's Office, went back and forth with Burckheimer, and have an agreement in which we both agreed to. So this is the resolution and then it'll be a subsequent contract that we engage Burckheimer as a result of last month's action by the board.
Thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Do I have a motion to authorize escrow release number one for Laurel Holdings Group LLC, 633 Germantown Pike, in the amount of $24,166.80?
So moved. Second.
Krista?
This is the first financial security release request for 633 Germantown, which is that property right at the corner of Germantown and Crescent. The amount is $24,166.80. We've inspected the requested items and found them to have been constructed in accordance with the plan and recommend release.
Thank you. Any board comment? Any public comment?
I have a question. This is the project that was supposed to be built as, well, as retail and/or office. And then there was a conditional use hearing and approved for apartments? Is that, are we talking about the same building or am I confused?
That's correct.
So where does that project stand in terms of the conversion to apartments? And I guess that hasn't gone through SADO, right? Is that, can someone explain where that project stands? Because I'm not sure what you were, you were inspecting improvements made consistent with the previous use.
Yep. So the applicant's required to escrow monies for the site improvements required by SADO. And that's what this is for. They have not and will not change as a result of that change in use.
Okay, but the change in use has not resulted in any kind of plan submission and review yet, is that the case?
I would have to defer to Charlie for that.
We haven't seen anything, but that's really a marketing issue for the owner of the building. And we will be granting use and occupancy permits to the various tenants if they are commercial or office tenants. But, and for the first time, any apartments are constructed. But whatever the mix is, based on his conditional use approval, is really up to the owner of the building and what tenancy secures.
Can I say something? I think everybody's a little confused on what Sedell's asking. This already received, this already went through land development. This already received approval through the land development process. Then it came back when they wanted to have, they thought that they would have the commercial type use for the entire building. They came back and asked for apartments, which are permitted by conditional use. Therefore, the conditional use was approved by the board and they can have apartments. There won't be another plan or SADO process that they will go through.
Thank you. Good questions. Thanks for the summary, Rick, on that. That clarifies things. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for a monument signed at 27 East Germantown Pike?
So moved.
Second.
Charlie?
Thank you. I need to get out of this and into the other one. I apologize. Okay, HARB met yesterday morning at their regular monthly meeting and had three applications to review. The first, you will find very familiar. You just approved a hold harmless agreement for this site. Here is the site actually on Germantown Pike. You may all recognize it as a white building with a red roof, which is very dominant in this picture. Again, same site plan. Again, same sign. This went before HARB and the HARB members found it to be an appropriate sign for the property and that it was used colors that are approved for the Historic District. In fact, Mr. Robbins got permission from Ameriprise Financial to deviate from some of their standard colors in order to meet the Historic District colors. And HARB, as a result, recommended approval of certificate of appropriateness for the sign. And Harb, as a result, recommended approval of certificate of appropriateness for the sign.
Great, thank you.
I don't know, do you want to take these separately, or do you want me to go through all three?
I'm fine with going through all three. Is everybody else good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, the next one is on Catherine Lane. It's 6 Catherine Lane. This is part of the Maple Hill development. We see a number of improvements for it because these are new houses and people are making a lot of improvements, particularly outdoor improvements. 6 Catherine Lane has requested permission to put an outdoor gas fireplace on a deck that they previously had approved. Harb saw nothing wrong with it, felt that the stone surround that they were proposing was appropriate, and noted that it would actually not be seen from the road. Here it is in the back of the house, and the fireplace is here on the left-hand side. And this is just a little bit of a description of where it will be on the end of the deck. And a little bit of a view of what style it will be. Harb found no problem with the style. They approved of the stone, and they recommended approval of certificate of appropriateness.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And then, do you want to go over the last one at 10 Catherine?
Excuse me, the third one is a couple doors down at 10 Catherine Lane. And in this case, the applicant is proposing to build a deck and a patio. Here is a site plan showing, this is again in the back of the house. The red rectangle is the deck that will come out of the sliding glass doors from the first floor of the house, down a couple of steps to a two-part patio. This part on the left, the smaller part, will have seating and a fire pit. This is a rendition of what it would look like. The deck would have a roof covering, which will have a roof of a sim material that they have on parts of the house, be a standing seam black roof, which they have on a porch and other areas on the house. And here would be the two-part patio, and the fire pit here is on the left. The Harb found this to be similar to many of the other improvements in the same neighborhood. Again, this is on the back of the house. They approved of the fact that they were using similar materials to other parts of the house and recommended approval of certificate of appropriateness. That was the final one.
Okay, thank you, Charlie. So just to kind of summarize, because we've just been talking about three items that we've not voted on yet. The first one is the monument sign at 27 East Germantown Pike. Do we have any public comment related to the sign? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now, do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the installation of an outdoor fireplace at 6 Catherine Lane? Charlie, can you just go back to that picture so everybody can see one more time? Thank you. Any board comment?
Oh, I didn't even.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any board comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. And the final is the, do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the installation of a deck and patio at 10 Catherine Lane?
So moved. Second.
And that's what we're seeing here. Any public or board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the last item on our amended agenda is an appointee. Do I have a motion to approve the appointment of Lee Heritage to the Environmental Advisory Board, term ending December 31, 2021?
So moved. Second.
Laura, I spoke to Leah earlier this week. She's got a bachelor's in environmental systems management from Penn State nonetheless, so you get extra points for that. She has a master's degree in environmental, maybe engineering, and she works as an environmental engineer now. So I think she'll be a great fit on EAB. You know, I just, she and I played some email and phone tag, you know, this year. We finally talked on Tuesday, and I'd like to get her on board and connect her with Deb and Deborah, the chair and vice chair of EAB, so, you know, we can refer tonight.
Thank you. Do we have any board comments or questions? Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. We are now down to the public comment period of the meeting. This is open public comment. Do we have any?
I do, Chair, if I could. This is Joe Down.
Yes.
Hi, so quick comment here. I was late for the meeting today. I had a client meeting. But there was one item that I would have liked to have gotten to upfront there was to apologize to you, Chair, for my behavior on the last meeting. Mr. Gutterplan's comments had brought back my township PTSD from years of some frustration here. So my interruption of you at that time was inappropriate, and I wanted to publicly apologize to you. That's not who I am, and I thought it was necessary to at least do that.
Well, I appreciate that, Joe, and thank you for that. I get it, you know. Anything that's around near your home, everybody's going to be sensitive to that. And I think that I feel very happy, content with the decision to carry the hearing over to this week so that there was more time to, you know, process everything. So I appreciate you attending the meeting and having your comments, and thank you for your words.
Thank you, thank you. And just from a secondary comment, this is meant for, in general, that I feel that, and this is for all the board members here, right? I feel that the process is broken. I was really disappointed in the last meeting because it sounded like that that project, that's the last time you guys are going to see it. And from the way the process, it felt like it used to work. You know, I watched Dr. Maury rebuild his. I've been here 20, 25 years almost now, right? And the one up where Dan Heran's Planet Fitness pizzazzes. I watched those guys go through hell over there to go through the board and make sure that the property was compliant. I heard Mr. Gutterplan talk about the historic look of it or whatever, right? And still, you know, I'll go on to the next board or wherever this thing ends up about the concerns I have about it being too big. But the process feels like it's broken. And the example I have is what was approved across the street is, I've had problems, and I've had nowhere to go. I've been left on my own. The staff at the township has been able to help me. The realtor of the property and the developer know me by name. My ceilings were cracking from the work that they did out here, and I got no help. So I just want the board to understand what you approved has consequences down the line. And if I show up here with him with problems, I'm going to be here because this is not right, guys. This isn't right. The fact that you guys are done with that project doesn't feel like it's right. The fact that I just heard the property up the street was changed over to, could be apartments now from when you guys saw it originally? I don't know if you knew that you approved it as apartments, but there are going to be more apartments over there?
Joe, again, I appreciate your comments, and I realize that you were not at the beginning of this meeting. And I'm going to, you know, let, if Sean Kilkenny can just in a moment kind of summarize again the process, because this is by no means the last time this project is coming before the board. And as far as the property across the street, that did go through a conditional use. So it was before the board. I would, if you haven't already, I would suggest signing up for the alerts through the township website so that you can be aware of the different boards that are, or meetings that are happening. But Sean, could you take a moment to describe the SADO process, what's happening next for 636?
Tonight, there was a conditional use approval for the apartments on Germantown Pike Associates, as was presented at the last hearing. There was additional comments from, I believe, three folks. And then the board closed the hearing to vote. The next step will be the subdivision and land development process. That is the process where stormwater is evaluated, parking, traffic arrangements, the, any kind of plantings, trees and such are addressed during that process and review. That plan will go before the County Planning Commission, the White Marsh Planning Commission, and then if approved, ultimately to the Board of Supervisors. And at that time, I don't know, will the public have an opportunity to comment? There'll also be review letters by our township engineer and other professionals.
Thank you.
And I think, yeah.
Thank you.
Fran, maybe you might want to share. I know on the heels of the Knowles that we are very sensitive to all that you're saying, Joe, and have tonight publicly requested that the developers stay in close contact with the residents in the area. Fran, did you have any other comments to add?
Yeah, Joe, first of all, I think it was great you coming on and honoring the behavior at the last meeting. You're a good man. So last week, Krista and I did meet with some of your neighbors, and we have an email list. We'll add you to it. And it's been my commitment as we went through the Knowles, which, as you know, is, that was, that's a tough one. It was a very tough one. It was a full-time job for us to deal with. But we're going to put you on the email list, and my commitment is to make sure that everybody's aware of the meetings coming up that have to do with that project. And we will meet at any time you want. Like, if you call me or text me, you know, I'll be there. You know, I'll bring whoever I need, whatever expert, so.
Expert.
That's our commitment, too.
And I guess, guys, we're messing the point here on this, guys, is that the mindset has changed. We were conservative at once for a long time in what was being approved here, and now it's like it's full speed ahead. I watched Mike Nolan go through hell for years trying to get really good projects approved over there, and they were shot down. And then I'm watching this, and again, when I make a call and say there's a problem, it's like, guys, we can't help you. Because you've lost control of what's happening. You approve it, and it goes forward. Because from a plan perspective, there's too much going on, and now we got precedents. I'll leave it for when we come back around again, guys. I just wanted to make a point here that from what is being approved here, it's like a floodgate, it feels like, of things that, that something's changed. In my 20 years here, it's changing drastically, right? I don't know who's been around long enough. They're supposed to put, I had a plan where they were, that they took my property. I signed the easement so they could put the fire hydrants in and put sidewalks in. And they were going to, they cleared us out. It's all going, right? But fire hydrant's still there. So my point is, is that it's just, what's the plan? And can we stick to it? Because the plan seems like open up the floodgates and let everybody do. We must be Plymouth, guys. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the time, everyone.
Any other public comments? Do we have any board comments?
Yeah, Laura, I just want to jump in real quick with a great kind of story of what goes on in our community with somebody who, you know, we're not, she's not on the agenda or anything. JL Brown is here tonight. She's a good friend of mine. And I met JL a few years ago, and we had a mutual issue that we worked through. And JL and her mother, Jane, have, they've really helped a lot of residents quietly. And they've got me in front of some people I never would have met before. And JL recently has helped with Park and Rec with Juneteenth. And now, as you know, it's February, it's Black History Month. She submitted a bunch of ideas to Tom Blumstrom, and he used just about every single one of them. And JL wasn't looking for any kudos or any accolades, but I wanted to make sure that she, that we got it out there. She's doing some great things for our community, making our residents happy and making White Marsh a great place for a lot of people who don't get to come to the meetings. And she sure as heck doesn't want to sit three hours for me to say thank you. But anyway, JL, thank you very much. I know you're in listen-only, but you've done a great job. And I want to make sure everybody knows about that, so appreciate it.
Thank you for sharing that, Fran. And JL, you have been on this meeting the whole time tonight. That's commendable. So thank you for reaching out, and Fran for connecting and doing all that you've been doing with Park and Rec. It's really appreciated.
Yep. So we're going to keep her working, that's for sure.
Good. Thank you. Any other comments tonight? Okay, I'd like to announce that we had executive session tonight to discuss litigation.
Real estate.
And, oh, real estate. And real estate. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Good night, everybody. Appreciate your time.
Bye, everyone. Night.